Good afternoon, welcome to the Peoria City Council's special study session for Wednesday, March 26th. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Ames.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
This is, we're part two of the proposed budget. It's for discussion only. We do not make any final votes during the study session. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Councilmembers, welcome to another budget session. We made great progress last night, as you all know. We made a number of presentations on the department, from the directors, on the departmental budgets, and we're continuing that tonight. And just a little bit of a recap, in terms of our approach, because of the tenure of the council, that is, there's no council members who, for whom the budget is new, and there are really very few changes in the budget based on the very small amount of new revenue that the city has, we're giving up a high overview of each of the departments by the director. And then, of course, the council can drill down at your pleasure into any level of detail that you would like around any of the budgets that you have before you. So what we'll do first off this evening is continue those department overviews. And the first of the department overviews will be Public Works and Utilities, and of course, Public Works and Utilities is one of the larger budgets, larger departments and correspondingly, one of the larger budgets. There are 234.8 people in this department, and Bill, you'll have to describe how you have a .8 person.
Yeah.
And the overall budget is $72,119,585. And of course, this is a department that covers a lot of the important service areas of the city: water and wastewater utilities, solid waste collection, street maintenance, stormwater management, and all of the attendant features around that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Mattingly, the director.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here to present the Public Works Utilities Budget for 2015. As the symbol shows, this is, the City of Peoria Public Works Utilities Department is an accredited agency. We were first accredited in 2009 and reaccredited last year in 2013, and we're very proud of that. There are only four agencies in the state of Arizona that are accredited, and that includes the City of Peoria, the City of Chandler, Coconino County, and Mojave County. This is an overview of the Public Works Utilities Department. I'll start with the Utilities area. Plant operations is that area that is responsible for the daily operation of our water treatment plants and our water reclamation facilities. Field operations is responsible for our remote facilities, including our wells, reservoirs, booster stations, lift stations, and all of our water distribution system, our wastewater collection system, and our growing reclamation system. On the public works side, excuse me, Water Resource and Environmental is responsible for environmental compliance, and they're also responsible for managing our city's water portfolio. On the public work side, we have facilities, fleet maintenance, solid waste, streets, storm drain, and transit. I'm going to jump right into utilities. Our service outcomes in the Utilities Department are quality water and wastewater services, efficient utility operation, regulatory compliance, and well-maintained systems. There are four items in the water area, and I'll go through those very quickly. The first is a very large item, but it relates to the cost of CAP water, which is increasing. 60% of the city's water supply is CAP water. Between 2013 and 2015, there's two components of cost with our water from CAP. The first is what they call municipal and industrial charges. They increased from $12 to $21 per acre foot over that short period of time. At the same time, the other component, the delivery fees, have increased from $129 to $157 per acre foot. These costs on the CAP are directly related to the Navajo Generating Station, and that's the power supply for the Central Arizona Project. And unfortunately, from what we know about all of the variables that are going on with the Navajo Generating Station, we're going to continue to see these rates go up over the next few years. The second item is a proposal that we have to increase the water system repair and maintenance budget for preventive maintenance on our wells, reservoirs, and booster stations. The third item is an ion chromatograph. That's a piece of laboratory equipment. This is a 10-year-old piece of equipment. It's used to analyze water samples for compliance with regulations and for operational concerns. The fourth item is utility equipment, which includes 160 cameras, which we have at a number of our remote locations. So there's cameras and a lot of related equipment, and this equipment is very important for the security of those systems, for our remote monitoring of those systems. This is ongoing in that area. Moving on to wastewater, we have two items here. The first one, the wastewater system maintenance includes routine sewer cleaning. We're going to use these funds to maintain large diameter sewers, in this case, 15- to 24-inch diameter sewers. This would be done on a rotating basis, so we can clean all of those sewers on a five-year cycle. And that's important because regular cleaning of our sewers reduces odors, it prevents blockages, and blockages create sanitary sewer overflows, and we don't like those. The other item relates to something at our Jomec Water Reclamation Facility, and that is, we propose to install capacitor banks, and this is electrical equipment, which will improve the operating efficiency of the equipment, such as pumps, blowers, and UV disinfection systems. These will also provide a level of protection from electrical spikes. Moving on to solid waste, our service outcomes are timely and efficient collection, maximize our recycling diversion, and we propose to implement same-day recycling and trash collection, and we'll talk a little bit about that. But first, I'll talk about commercial. We have one item in commercial. Our landfill costs are increasing. Between 2012 and 2014, the tipping fees have increased from $23.50 a ton to $26.50 a ton. As we discussed at the council budget study session in December, we don't anticipate a rate increase in commercial solid waste at this time. However, over the next six months, we're going to be reviewing our operations for both our rolloff business and our commercial front-load business to ensure that we're not only competitive, but that we are recovering the cost for those operations. On the residential side, again, we have a line item in here for increased landfill costs. We do have another item, the second item, is we propose to supplement our container management program, container management. These are the plastic rolloff, or roll containers that we have at our residences, so you have a trash and recycling. But we're going to use a vendor who will repair damaged containers. In some cases, they can actually do that on-site. And where possible, they will do that on-site, but otherwise, they're going to collect these. They'll take them, they'll refurbish them, and then they'll be redeployed later on. So this will save costs in replacing those with new containers. The third item relates to a contingent driver. The contingent drivers are temporary on-call employees. We use both part-time drivers and contingent drivers to minimize overtime and cover routes when we have vacations and sick leave. Contingent drivers and part-time drivers often become our full-time drivers once those vacancies occur, and we use this as a way to train people and also get to know people, so it's a great program that we have here. The fourth item relates to the same-day service. Solid waste is prepared to begin same-day collection for trash and recycling as early as January 2015. This change will require extensive customer outreach and communication. We plan to inform residents in a variety of ways, including digital media, vehicle signage, newspaper advertisements, direct mail, door hangers, and radio advertising. And most of these are going to be reoccurring events for over about a six-month period, so we're going to get the word out that we're going to be very heavily doing this. In addition, we're going to get some part-time temporary staff for customer service when we make that transition to be able to answer the phone calls, because certainly, we'll still have questions once we do all of that.
Question?
On that same day, is it one truck shows up and dumps both? Or one truck, and then a little while later, another truck?
Vice Mayor Ames, it's the latter. There will be two different trucks driving down the streets, just as they are now. For that reason, we're still servicing the same number of routes, it's the same number of customers, we're just doing it all on one day in that particular area. It means revising all of our routes, so there's a substantial effort there, and then again, changing the days of collection for folks is something they'll have to get used to. It is something that is disruptive.
Will this require more trucks, then?
No, it will not. It'll be the same number of trucks.
How do you manage that?
Well, we're serving the same, we're just doing it on the same day, so it's, instead of maybe serving area south of Bell for trash on Monday and Tuesday, we'll be doing all of that. In one area, we'll do trash and recycle, so it doesn't increase the number of trucks, it doesn't increase the number of routes, it's just how you service those routes. This next item is fleet maintenance. Our service outcomes are timely and efficient services and customer satisfaction. And because this is an internal service division, our customers are other city departments. There are two items in fleet. One is for security fencing around our tire storage area. Right now, our tires are stored under a canopy, so they're shaded, but they're secured by a series of large chains and padlocks. So when you deliver tires, you have to string this chain through a whole tube of tires to secure them, and likewise, if you're distributing them for use, you do that. We're going to put these in a chain link enclosure. That'll be secure, it'll be a lot easier to move tires in and out of there, it'll be a lot more efficient for us. The other is a small item, but it's an important item for our fleet folks. We have 25-year-old technician workstations, and these workstations support the electronic diagnostic equipment and computer stations that they use while they're working on their The next division is facilities. Our service outcomes are excellent customer service and efficient use of resources. This budget addition in facilities, the facilities division includes, their budget includes funding for a variety of reoccurring costs, such as annual fire system inspection and maintenance, elevator inspection and service, water conditioning for our cooling systems on the campus, and various HVAC maintenance. However, there are a number of items that come up each year that are unplanned and unanticipated. Examples of these in the last year was we had to do a repair to an electric generator at the Pinnacle Peak Public Safety Substation. Earlier this year, we did a budget amendment to pay for repairs to a garage gate at our Public Safety Administration Building Garage, and we had to do roof repairs prematurely at the Beardsley Water Reclamation Facility. So those are the kinds of things that come up that need to be reacted to. This will give us the ability to react to those as they occur throughout the year. The next area is streets. Our service outcomes are safe and well-maintained roadways and preserving our assets. There are several budget changes in street, and I'll go through those. The first two I'm going to talk about at the same time. These are electrical costs, and there are 14,500 streetlights that the city maintains and pays the electrical bill for, as well as 112 signalized intersections. This supplemental will pay for the increased electrical costs for our existing system and as we grow that system. The third item is traffic signal equipment. Each year, we add more specialized equipment to our traffic signals. This includes things like the flashing yellow arrows, the pedestrian countdown signals, and remote operation and monitoring of those systems. This will provide for funding for the replacement of that equipment. The fourth item, street maintenance supplies. The Streets Division uses contractors to do crack fill services and pavement overlays. However, our street staff prepares those roadways in advance of a lot of that work, and they do such things as edge milling, concrete repair, pavement patching, and this provides for funding for the supplies that they need in that operation.
Question?
Yeah, you say these are new budget additions, but you've already been spending money on street lighting electricity. Is this an increase? Is that what you mean?
Vice Mayor Ames, exactly so. These are increases.
Increases to what we had last year here.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The fifth item, we propose to replace our asphalt paver, which is 15 years old. This was originally scheduled to be replaced in 2011, and we deferred that, but now, we have higher maintenance costs on that piece of equipment, and we have higher downtime, which is, we just can't rent that kind of equipment. So it's time to replace it, and we will be replacing it in 2015. And the next item is for, the Streets Division requires contract service support during their peak seasons, which are their paving seasons, and this minimizes the demand on the staff and minimizes overtime, and it stretches their resources. The next area and the last area in Public Works is transit. Our service outcomes are safe, reliable, and affordable transit service, and providing excellent customer service. These three additions are all grant-funded, but I will go through each of them. The first one relates to increased service demand, and just remind council, our dial-or-ride program currently uses a hybrid service model. By that, we mean the city uses its own dial-or-ride vans to transport multiple passengers in kind of a concentrated service area. And then, we use taxis where we have longer trips and single-passenger trips. And those taxis are contracted through the Regional Public Transportation Authority, and we have a regional contract that we use there. And over the past two years, the demand for these services has increased, so therefore, we're going to go back to our PTA and request more grant funding to react to that demand. The second item is for mobile dispatch equipment, so this is equipment that gets mounted in the dial-or-ride buses, and what this does is it interacts with our dispatch system. It provides voice and data communications to the driver, it provides GPS tracking, and it provides vehicle telemetry. It monitors how the vehicle is operating. The third item is the replacement of transit buses, and the transit buses, in this case, we're going to replace two this year. 80% of the cost is covered through a federal Transit Authority grant, and 20% is covered by the RPTA. We budget for it, but it is entirely grant-funded. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Rivera.
Mr. Mattingly, can you go to the page that talks about commercial?
Yes.
Okay. That landfill cost, can you talk, can you discuss that? What that entails? The $84,000?
So this is what we pay, whether it's the City of Glendale, the City of Phoenix, or Waste Management, depending on where the truck is and where we dump that load. This is the cost that we pay. They call it a tipping fee, and it's a cost per ton. And the cost that I described in the $26.50 range is actually an average cost. It's less expensive at some locations. If I take it directly to Waste Management, it may be less expensive than if I take it to a transfer station, which means they have to, they have to pay to take it from the transfer station to their disposal site.
So on average, where do you, where do you take it? To Waste Management or Glendale or?
We use all of the three. Primarily, it's Glendale and the transfer station for Waste Management. Those are the most convenient locations for us.
And who are the, who are the clients here that were?
These could be multifamily residential, they could be individual businesses, and they could be rolloff customers as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I'm looking at your budgets from 12 to the next one, 15, and I noticed that you're going up 5% to 6% and maybe a little less this year, closer to 5%. Do you see this continuing? And it isn't so much personnel. You're kind of holding on personnel. Although, I do see one that I didn't see you talk about, the fleet reserve. You're going to be spending quite a bit this year on the fleet reserve.
Let me speak to this fleet reserve. What we do with the fleet reserve, this is replacement vehicles. And what happens with every vehicle that we have in our fleet is there's an initial purchase cost, and then there's a cost that every one of our customers pays each year and contributes to a fleet replacement fund. So when we replace a fleet vehicle, it is in the fleet replacement fund. We look at every vehicle, every year, that is scheduled for replacement. We have a system, there's a software system that we use that assigns a point value to every vehicle, and when it gets to a certain level of point value, it happens to be 15, then we look at that vehicle as a candidate for replacement. But then, we look at the actual condition of the vehicle and whether or not it can be deferred. I talked about the paver as a great example. That was able, we were able to defer that. We didn't need to replace that then. So we do this with every vehicle in the fleet. We do that first with that software, and then, we send that out to all the client departments and say, hey, do you really need to replace this vehicle? Oftentimes, what the department says, no, that's a perfectly functional vehicle, we're going to hang on to it. And then, we have a fleet advisory committee, which is a cross-functional team that includes the fleet division, Public Works, community services, police, fire, finance, and there's at least one other in there, but it's a, it's a cross-functional team. Then, we go through that list again, and then, we challenge the departments on some of those vehicles because we look at their condition. Ultimately, we put together a list of vehicles that get put into the budget for replacement in a given fiscal year. That number is going to vary significantly from year to year. A good example, in this case, from FY14, where we are right now, going into FY15. This year, we happen to have replaced eight solid waste vehicles, cost of about $250,000 apiece. You're looking at well over $2 million when you aggregate all of that. But next year, there aren't any of those that are going to be replaced. So again, it's looking at the vehicles, where they are, how they're being used, and a lot of scrutiny in which ones we replace each year. So it's going to vary from year to year.
Yeah, I understand that. I was asking the question because you were spending a million-something for several years, and now, you're three-some, $3 million-something on the fleet, but you're saying this is a unique year? And I guess my larger question is, is some of this going to kind of balance out? You spend more in one category because you need to do more maintenance in some areas or more vehicles in some areas, but not in others? Or, but we still continue to get like about a 5% increase every year in your department without any increase in employees? And I know some of that is personnel, we gave raises, but that doesn't account for most of it. It accounts for all the other things you're doing. And I know you did mention water, so I know that's one, one element that keeps rising, right?
Right. I guess the way to answer that is it really is, there's the staffing issues. We're not adding new employees.
No, I noticed that.
We maintained the same number of employees.
That's not the reason.
And we've been very careful about being very frugal in our budgets, at the same time, asking for the things that are necessary. We come forward, just as I went through the things that I listed here, those are very necessary things. So I, you know, it's a little difficult when I go back to 2012 to 13, because I don't have those figures at the ready.
Well, if I may, one just quick observation on this is, Mr. Mattingly's kind of taking one for the entire city in regard to the fleet reserve, because that is the acquisition of all vehicles for the entire city that comes out of that specific budget. The way we've been paying for that is, on an ongoing basis, we have these fleet replacement charges, which actually have been very stable, in fact, have reduced somewhat, thanks to the hard work of the Fleet Solutions Group in scrutinizing those, looking at the amount of replacement time and the like. So when you look at the ongoing obligation of our budget, we have a very good story to talk about how we're managing our vehicles, because we're able to replace them on a timely basis, and yet, also able to maintain that ongoing cost, not having increases. So if we're, one were to exclude that piece from his budget, you would see it even be a flatter budget in the public works operations over a period of time.
Yeah, but I don't think that accounts for all of it. I did point that one out, and I noticed in some departments, if you go back to 12, and then you do 13, 14, 15, you get a higher increase, although 14 to 15 often stayed about the same. But other departments, it is more flat across the years. So I'm just wondering if, and you've told us some of the things that do require special work this year, and then, I'm thinking other things that you did the previous years don't require that work, so I'm, I guess I'm looking for more of a little bit of a balance here.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mayor and Council, I think part of that answer is, from year to year, we, all departments start with a base budget, and the only way they can really increase that is through the supplementals, or in Bill's case, they also have the purchases of new vehicles, so replacements. So I would say in those historical years, you probably had some supplementals that were included in those budgets, and that's why they vary from year to year. They probably were one-time, so then they fell off. So it depends on what is being approved and asked for every year.
Okay. Yeah, and I know there are a lot of, a lot of supplementals. That totaled $2.5 million, and so, but that's not the fleet, is it? Is the fleet in here? Yeah, fleet is not that much here, but you got that as a separate item, I guess, not a supplemental. So yeah, then we're at $5 million for those supplementals in the fleet, so I can see where that pushes it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Bill. The next presentation will be from Chris Hockes, our Director of Planning and Community Development. This department has 14 employees and a overall budget of about $4.8 million.
Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, rather. I'm pleased to present the Planning and Community Development Budget for fiscal year 2015. The department is comprised of two divisions implementing four service areas. The Community and Strategic Planning Division implements development review and zoning administration, as well as strategic planning, which of course includes the general plan, historic preservation, and various systems such as open space, circulation, and infrastructure. The other division, the Neighborhood and Revitalization Division, they're responsible for grant administration, which are local and federally funded, neighborhood-oriented programs like Neighborhood Pride and the HOA Academy, as well as a new area that we started last year, and that's coordinating human services. About half of the total department budget is general funded, and the other half is from federal funding sources. The general fund operating portion contains a 3.7% reduction from last year, and this reflects the year-to-year variance in one-time funding. The Communities and Strategic Planning Division, they touch several council goals as identified on the screen. Some of the key service outcomes include timely review of development cases, an opportunity to resolve conflicts through our expansive civic engagement program, and we also measure success through key benchmarking tools such as the National Citizen Survey. As you know, the city fared quite well. In our area, we fared particularly well against some of our national benchmarks as well, and I'm not too shameless to point out some of the remarks that we got, but I think this results reflected confidence from our citizens with the direction the city is moving relative to growth and development. Our other division, Neighborhood and Revitalization, they also touch several council goals, and they're intended to enhance neighborhoods and service delivery to residents. Our success is measured in maintaining good standing with HUD and leveraging relationships with volunteers, nonprofits, and other agencies. Similar to the previous slide, citizens have also expressed a high level of confidence in the city and its functions. A few examples include, from the National Citizen Survey, the citizens are happy in their neighborhoods, which, as you know, is a quality-of-life variable. They had a 95% satisfaction rate. People also find a lot of value in the services that we offer, and one example is our HOA Academy, where most recently, we had a 96% satisfaction. People found value in that, in that service. And then, most recently, Peoria participated in a MAG age-friendly communities contest, and while we ultimately did not prevail, we were certainly one of the finalists, and we'll be accepting an award tomorrow. And I think what this shows is that... And I think what this shows is that, that Peoria is, says a lot about us being an inclusive community, and so we're very proud of that. In regard to budget changes, we have five budget requests for next year to accomplish council and organizational objectives. The requests are built around maintaining core services and addressing growth, growth needs, rather, in a measured fashion, as we continue to assess development conditions out there. So going down the list, the first one, very familiar with this one, this is the popular neighborhood grant program. This is the program where HOAs and registered neighborhood associations, they can request matching funds for various neighborhood-related programs, beautification and so forth. This is $150,000 one-time. Items two and three are existing contract positions that we carry related to growth with funding that will expire at the end of this fiscal year. So we are seeking to continue the funding over the next fiscal year. Item two is a part-time administrative support position that we have. You may know that we have currently one administrative position in our department. We're a boards-heavy department, we support six boards. We've also, as you know, seen an uptick in development, so this position not only provides redundancy for the existing administrative position we have, in terms of that person's sick or on vacation to support those boards, but also to help out with some of the development, development activity that we've been seeing. Item three is the full-time contract planner that we currently have, and, and again, this position supports our current development activity, but also frees up capacity for us to pursue strategic planning activities that we have. And that, we're requesting an amount of eighty, a little over 80,000 one-time funding. The administrative assistant, 30,000 one-time funding. The fourth item, this is the, what we're calling a development coordinator. This is a growth-related function wherein we are requesting to add .5 FTEs to an existing .5 management analyst FTE that we currently have. Now, I know last night Scott talked about his side of the .5 FTEs. This represents the other side of that. And so this person would not only support current management analyst functions, and for our department, that includes things like budget reconciliation, trend analysis, but that person would also serve as a coordinator for development activities. That would include things related to Excela permitting software, helping coordinating, getting around the process, but also, most importantly, the tracking and administration and interpretation of impact fees, development agreements, and our zoning stipulations. And this would all be done in close coordination with our budget office. And, and in that regard, we think there's a really good synergy here. We're a frontline development department, and we think it's important, as developers will come to us initially as they seek their projects, and so we'll have somebody that can not only help caretake them through the process, but be able to address some of the questions they have early on related to impact fees or development agreements and those kind of things. And then finally, the, the last thing is HUD funding, but really what that is, is expenditure authority that we're seeking for, related to program income that we've gotten from our NSP3 program. So that's expenditure authority for that item. And then I'll mention, too, of course, as you know in your appendix, we do have the recent recommendations from a not-for-profit committee relative to our federal and, and local grant recommendations. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Council? Mr. Ames?
Yes, I'm looking at page 617. And I do like to look at the, the trends over time and how department expenditures change. And I notice, moving along 12 and 13, and then you had a, a big jump for 14, but it, the estimate is considerably less. Can you explain what happened there? You went from 3.4 actual million in 13, and then you requested 5.6 million in current budget we're in, but the estimate is going to be 3.7, so.
Vice Mayor Ames, while I don't have those specific items in front of me, what I believe, what I recall the item to be is that during that time, we had some carryovers. This is a time when development started to uptick, and so we had to carry over some projects that we had to the next year.
A good portion of that also, Councilmember Ames, if you look at page 621, if you look at page 621, it's a listing of all the carryover requests for, that are currently funded in the 14-year budget that they are requesting to carry over to the 15 budget.
So they're still being carried over, some of them?
And a big portion of that, if you look there, is the community development block grant at about 600 and, almost $700,000. So that's, we carry that over on an annual basis when we haven't expended that, so that we have the appropriation in the following year.
Okay, so you may be carrying over again to 16, I think.
Some of that, some of the block grants, typically you'll see that.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Ms. Carla?
Chris, I, I know that there's a tremendous amount of work that comes out of your, your team. I, I'm a little concerned about the amount of personnel that you have. I mean, I know that we have talked about this part-time person and this half-person to work on development. Look at all of the things that had to be carried over. I mean, you've got a million-two that had to be carried over from last year because you don't have enough personnel to do it. And as we continue with development, especially in the northern part of the city, they continue to get much more complex. So I guess my question is, are you budgeting enough to get all the work done?
Councilmember Carlott, we continue the approach, the, the budget in a very measured fashion. We continue to assess development trends. As you know, over the last year and a half, we have come forward when we've, when we've needed, when we have had development needs, we've, we've gotten contract planner assistance. Most recently, I black, back in December, the council approved for a contract associate planner, which will help take some of the journey-level projects that we have to free up even more capacity. I think with the, with the assistance that the council has granted us in, in, in contract labor, I think we're adequate to meet the needs of the future. But we'll continue to assess that.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I think you answered the carryover. It wasn't so much a direct projects of your staff, there are things like the HUD grants and the, the Grand Avenue Coalition and things that you're not actually providing personnel for, but they're, they're carried in your budget.
Correct.
And we're carrying those over, so, good. Maybe not good, that's, that's why.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you.
Next up is another one of our larger departments, our Community Services Department. And this, of course, is the department that is responsible for parks, recreation, the sports complex, libraries, and a, and a great deal of the quality-of-life benefits that Peoria's citizens enjoy. And of course, that also includes our support for the arts and our support for special events. So what John will do is kind of give the overview for the department, and then he'll drill down a little bit on both the arts budget for the year ahead and also the special events budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to John Sefton, the Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Carl. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my honor to present the Community Services Budget. And you will see, the programmatic approach is directly tied to council goals and objectives and is responsive to our citizenry. A few themes will become prevalent. We're continuing to balance our services throughout the city. We're maintaining service levels with our aging infrastructure, and we're changing based on customer demands, and we're consistently attempting to get better at providing customer service. And you'll see a prudent reinvestment into the programs and the facilities that we offer. And there is a strict priority on policy concerning safety and security of the recreation amenities and those programs. Every year, I like to read through our mission in the Community Services Department, and it is to meet the needs of the citizens of Peoria by developing, implementing, and maintaining quality programs, services, events, and facilities, which are cost-effective, creative, and responsive to citizen input. We meet this mission through the organization that, and the structure that you see before you. Additionally, as you all know, we're in the process of becoming a nationally accredited agency. Our site visit was conducted this last week. Our visitors, in their words, said Peoria has a lot to be proud of. And I, as a director, could not be more proud of the team of professionals that, that we have and the efforts that they put forth every day. So the first of our divisions is the Administration Division. This focuses on the department's resources and leadership, including the long-term visioning, planning, and budgeting of the unique span of recreation and leisure amenities. I'd really like to recognize, first, the Budget Department for their support and how they helped us create all of the elements that go into this presentation, and also particularly our Senior Management Analyst, Maria Calcaterra, and Management Analyst, Heidi Gonucio, who've helped me put all together the hundreds of pages that we have within this budget. As well, each of the supervisors in the program areas had a direct responsibility to prevent, to present their value to the communities. We're really engaging them at all the different levels. The service outcomes, again, leadership, planning, and support for the varied programs through the Administration Division. Our budget objectives this year are to maintain services with a significant investment in the replacement and of our financial reservation and registration software. This piece of software, similar to some of the other that John Imig mentioned in yesterday's presentation, is at its end of life and will no longer be supported by its vendor. And as we stare yet into the sunset of another high-quality, wonderful spring training season, the Sports Facilities Division, under the leadership and direction of Chris Calcaterra, is responsible for the community parks, which includes Rio Vista, as well as Pioneer, and the Peoria Sports Complex. Cost drivers continue to be utilities and staffing, both of which fluctuate based on the demand and the programming happening at the facilities. Our facility maintenance can continue to be an issue and an impact, and we continue to make those investments to make, to take care of those amenities. And community parks, with the addition of Pioneer, continue to respond to high levels of use, tournaments from outside the area, sports tournaments, and with that comes an additional cost and a continued maintenance, infrastructure need. This year's budget objectives are to maintain the services and maintain our assets. You'll see that the division are really set out to take care of, take the specific elements within the community parks that wear out, sidewalks, the sports complex, as the number of safety-related replacements that are necessary. And we've got some capacity here, as we mentioned a couple weeks ago. Professional soccer is coming to Peoria, and this is a one-time ask to offset, and will be offset by revenues, but this gives us the capacity to host and provide great customer service. And the Parks Division. Parks and Right, a right-of-way division, is led by Kirk Haynes, Parks Manager, and they provide the day-to-day maintenance of the city's 33 neighborhood parks, 25 miles of trails, and 60 miles, or 343 acres, of the city's right-of-way and retention basins. Similar to the other themes, we continue to, to deal with aging infrastructure and the facilities, from playgrounds to sidewalks, and are constantly attempting to be the best and responsive to citizens' concerns, whether it be maintenance in the parks or maintenance in the right-of-way areas. Our significant asks this year for park repairs include a number of electrical replacements, lighting replacements, drinking fountain replacements, and amenity painting. A number of Ramadas are reaching the age of the 12- to 15-year age, and it's time to get them painted up and freshened up. This, this section also has the increase based upon the right-of-way and the capital improvement projects. For example, the Lake Pleasant Parkway and 91st Avenue, as those inventory come into the city's ownership, we budget to provide for that response. The libraries, they receive an amazing support from the public and its network of volunteers, as well as the friends of the Peoria's Public Library. Mary Roberts, library manager, provides the daily leadership, and if I may say, an unperiled enthusiasm and passion for its services. Its primary cost drivers are personnel and materials, and we've got a couple of significant demands or significant increase in service trends, which include a, a bigger need for digital materials, all the iPads and the Nooks that we can check out, that also has a cost. We have an increase on early, increased focus on early learning, and that ties directly to our one-time ask. And we also have a number of users that are looking for using the library space in different ways, whether it be having, being able to accommodate a large storytime or a quiet session for a new business. And we're finding those folks are using our libraries. This year's budget addition is to replace two of the three literacy stations. Two of the three literacy stations at Sunrise Mountain Library. These computers have access to over 60 educational learning centers, and just at that library alone, library branch, over 12,000 user sessions were logged last year. And here's where we're going to dive in a little bit tighter to the public art program. And this piece is titled "On Track," and I'd like to keep that as a theme as we move through the discussion. We are on track. In essence, I'd like to take a big-picture look at the arts in Peoria. Hang tight. In essence, this graphic demonstrates the many ways that the city of Peoria is incorporating the arts into the community. Our recreation program participation recognized 5,400 individuals last year, participating in things from guitar lessons to young Rembrandts. Our, our city produces and supports special and cultural events. The city has established a capacity for offering arts grants. The PERCENT for the Arts Fund establishes the financial capacity for large and small-scale public art pieces, along with a public process for its selection. The city supports facilities and arts groups, as depicted on the right side of the grid there. And it also is important to acknowledge our partners, like PUSD, and, and those that are beyond the city, like HOAs and the commercial businesses that folk on, focus on arts and the investment in the arts. And finally, the city is networking directly with arts organizations beyond the city. The, most recently, the West Valley Arts Council recognized Peoria as a champion of the arts. And just yesterday, we were in the final running as a Governor's Office in the Arts Community Award. We did not receive that, but we were in the finalists. So it's, it's still a high recognition for us. And we do, Robert Benson, a former commissioner on the Arts Commission, was recognized as Governor's Artist of the Year. So it's really a significant role that we're playing through the arts. And we do base a lot of our arts programming on a direct response from our citizens. This is a graph that is from the survey back in 2008 that was conducted by Arizona State University as part of the Cultural Arts Master Plan. At that time, residents expressed that arts were important and that it was important for them to see that the city was actually supporting arts locally. Just last year, we again engaged the citizenry in a scientifically, statistically validated survey, and this is a plethora of arts and leisure-oriented activities. And you'll see as part of this, ranking just three, at about 32% of our respondents demonstrating a need for museum, arts, and cultural programs. That number 18,000 translates to the number of households in the community that demonstrate a need for museum, arts, and cultural programs. So pretty significant and pretty consistent as we look over the years. So, as we establish the efforts in creating the arts experience here in Peoria, there are several elements that we take into consideration. Venues that accentuate and facilitate the experience, varied programmatic opportunities, and the support elements, things like the audience, the financial resources, the volunteers, and the creative leadership. And just as my earlier slide demonstrated with the building blocks and how the arts program is working, it's through our partnerships, leveraging resources, that the city program, we seek to grow the public arts experience. So, as you know, Kirk Haynes and Andre LaCarty have been charged with the implementation of the city's public arts program. It falls within the council goal of community building and quality of life. This budget request, which is straight out of the PERCENT of the arts program, will establish a funding source or an idea source that we can take to the community and identify what types of arts projects we would be looking to involve. So we've established a public art budget placeholder with a $700,000 one-time ask. We do not see this going into one location, but we do see this as utilizing, or leveraging our current investment in the Peoria Sports Complex as, or the stadium, as well as an investment in the north as we look to establish pieces, whether it be along Happy Valley or up by the library or just additional areas. Just as we've had a lot of discussion about the public process, this ask, or gives the budget authority, if I say this correctly, the budget authority to engage in the process. Any contracts, any pieces would follow that public process and come before you as an agenda item, and look for your approval then.
All right, if I may, just to make sure, because I do understand this is a significant point. So there is a separate PERCENT for the Arts Fund that is generated from revenue from capital projects that have been explained, can only be used to support art-related pieces. It's very It's very specific in its use. There has been a balance that has grown up, and so Mr. Sefton and his staff, in recognizing that, wanted to begin a process to work with the council and the arts commission to figure out the best uses for that. All this really represents is the authority that you would have, and then we would come through and go through this process before any of these dollars would be applied. So just to make sure we're clarifying on how we're dealing with that budget terribly.
Mr. Anderson, maybe your answer. This comes from the percent for the arts? Marty, this isn't a separate funded source. It kind of looks like it is in the budget, but, because you've got a separate page for public art, and then you've got a separate page for percent for the arts.
It's transferred.
Yeah, okay. But it's transferred.
Well, as they do, look, I can guarantee you, this is in absolute regard to the percent of the arts.
I accept that, I just wanted to clarify that. But I did notice the percent of the arts, last year, what, we spent 335, and now this next year, we got almost 1, 1 and 1/2 million. So our, this money is accumulating, but we're not doing the art?
I think, but the, but the answer is-
Is that why you want the 700? Because you want to really start doing it?
We'd like to do some art and engage the process and have the, the agreement here to be able to move forward with a vision and to be able to execute. Again, I think rest assured that we have established a strong process of public engagement to the best of our abilities, and, and would look to execute that the same and then bring those recommendations through the arts commission and to you as a council.
So you need separate authority, that money is there, percent for the arts, and it's accumulating a lot faster than we're using it, I see, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's exactly it.
Okay. So you're looking to do at least 700,000 next fiscal year?
I would say that we're looking to have that as a threshold, and that we work the process to establish what and how that becomes as an art piece.
Because we'll still have a surplus.
We, after this, if this were the expenditure, there would still be a surplus on the, the percent for the arts, yes.
Yeah, let me just, Vice Mayor, just answer that another way. The money continues to accumulate, as you're pointing out. What, what John and the community services staff anticipate this year is being able to bring forward two pieces of art, and they're estimating that it might be in, in the neighborhood of 700,000. So that's the, the budget placeholder, if you will, that they're putting in for that. That's not a guarantee that that will be spent, but that will be authorized within the budget to be spent. Now, with each expenditure, they will come back to the council. So this is not authorizing them to spend 700,000, but it's authorizing that money to be in the budget, and they then will come back to you for the specific allocation or approval of the art and the expenditure for that piece of art. Is that?
Yeah, I understand. I, I thought the percent for the arts automatically went into the budget if it was there, but not so, right?
Well, it, it would. If this, if this art is not, if, if they don't spend the 700,000, it does go back into that same fund. It's dedicated dollars, so it's, it doesn't get to be spent for other purposes.
No, I, I-
Okay.
It stays in fund balance and reserve, that, that would be correct. The funds would stay in reserves unless you, as a council, authorize the use of that money.
We authorize tons of expenditures all the time, so I, but this is a special situation?
Correct.
Any questions? Carl?
Yeah, John. John, does anybody complain to you about the trails? Like from all of the Peoria, about how dark it is at night and no lights. People like to walk it or ride their bikes, and they're kind of scared because it's, sometime you see some homeless people down there or something, you know, so I was wondering, did you ever get any complaints or no's?
Councilmember Leonie, no, personally have not received any concerns, but I do know that through our public engagement processes prior to my arrival here, that, that was a discussion and has been a continued dialogue as we go through our community services master plan update. So I do recognize that the lighted trails provide an opportunity for us to look at it as an enhancement, and then our next decision point would be to identify fund, future funding, as well as the appropriate location.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about public art?
So our next step, let me set the stage, if you will, for a discussion on our arts partners. As you know, staff have been engaged in discussions with the business support and the evolution of the relationships with both Arizona Broadway Theater and Theater Works. Recommended this year is a one-time funding support for Theater Works as they manage, occupy and program the city-owned Center for the Performing Arts. Per year directions, staff have been actively involved with the Theater Works Board, as well as the executive director, Daniel Shea. I'm pleased to report that as we further strengthen the operating relationships, we have moved the needle with respects to the diversity of programming at the center, the financial reporting and accounting, the community engagement of Theater Works, and as they support a variety of the city's special events and activities. Recognizing that the structural framework of the original operating agreement is not meeting expectations, staff recommends and looks for your support in establishing a transition to the right level of managerial control for the responsibility of the Performing Arts Center. We see this as using one-time funding in fiscal years 15 and 16 as we build the ongoing capacity to ensure the successful transition and the ultimate operation of the Performing Arts Center.
Perhaps, and, and what I'll, maybe I can do is, I think John just really articulated well what the strategy is for the city in, in the assumption of operation for the Center for Performing Arts. Let me give a quick recap. As you know, over the years, we've had a relationship with, with Theater Works to be the master tenant at the Center for Performing Arts. And of course, there has been a need for helping to support that operation year in and year out for, for a number of years now, including last year when there was a request for $350,000. Now, last year, the budget, during the budget process, the council saw fit to authorizing the use of first $200,000 and then $150,000 if certain milestones were met and if certain metrics were, were reached. And that included such things as improving on the programming, having good data that was brought back to us, doing reporting, having, having more oversight, a number of different other factors like that. Quite honestly, we see a success story in, in that. And give you an example of that, we're seeing that Theater Works has reported that ticket revenue is up year-to-date, I think it's 32%. The city usage of the Peoria Center for Performing Arts is up 83%. There's been a significant change in the ability to get city use and also in different program offerings, which is up actually 350%. And that, a lot of that is because the council saw fit to have, as one of the deliverables, increased programming beyond the community theater that, that Theater Works traditionally provided, and we have seen that that has been delivered. And then lastly, rental activity is also up about 85% from just the prior year. So we think that this has been a success story. The council's suggestion to have these milestones seem to have worked very effectively. But that said, there is still a, a need to support that, the Center for Performing Arts. The revenue that is brought in through the various sources, once again, does not fully recover the full cost for utilities for undertaking these programs, for the fixed costs that come with that. So, in talking quite a bit with the Theater Works group, we have talked, as John had mentioned, about beginning the assumption where the city begins to assume the operation of that. So we changed the relationship from where Theater Works serves away from a master tenant to more of a key tenant, a primary tenant that they work with us, and instead the city works to assuming the operation. But we think that this is something that we should do over a period of time for a couple of reasons. One, of course, Theater Works has announced their programming for the next season, they are well positioned in place, we're happy with the deliverables. We think that if we instead, as John had mentioned, move the dial a bit, we increase the expectation, the oversight, the governance, there's more involvement with the, the city in some of the decision-making, that, again, we could provide some one-time funding as we, as an organization, begin the process of identifying some ongoing revenue to support this operation. So probably for the next year or two, we look at funding of about, I think we're thinking $350,000 is identified in the budget, correct? On a one-time basis, probably for the next year or two. By that time, we would come back in the budget process and beginning in the forecast early next year, we would identify that ongoing place mark as something that we will have to assume, an ongoing obligation we would have for that, that piece. One other last thing before, I don't know if we have any other suggestions, but this is, what we see is this is very comparable to the types of support that other jurisdictions in the valley have to do to provide for their centers, whether it is Wickenburg, Scottsdale, Tempe, Chandler. All of these require some additional funding from their other entities to make those happen. So, don't know if any other thoughts to that, or if I can address any questions on our financial approach.
I'll just add a little bit more to that, and I think, Jeff, you've summed it up real well. As we've talked about in the past, the, there, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find a city anyplace that has a performing arts center that does not provide some level of municipal support for that center. When communities construct performing arts centers, there's an understanding that there's a certain amount of the benefit that accrues from having a performing arts center that is a public benefit. It's a public good, much as a park provides a, a public benefit. And there's, of course, also a, a personal benefit. The individual that goes to the theater pays for that personal benefit in their ticket price. But there is certainly going to be an ongoing municipal support, a city support, that is set out at the onset of the construction of the center and will continue over time. And I think this is an important transition step. As you know, this, this model that Jeff has described is something that I have felt is an inevitable step, long-term, in the evolution of the management of the center. It was an optimistic model, I think, when it was begun with Theater Works being really the operating tenant, and, and numerous discussions over the past few years, we've all sought with goodwill to try to make that model work, but I think as we move forward in time, the model that Jeff just described gives both parties a, a greater sense of optimism in terms of the, the ultimate use of the facility. It gives Theater Works a, a greater ability to succeed, and it gives the city more opportunities to use our building in a way that broadly serves the public in, in the arts arena, more so than has been the case in the past. But we are quite optimistic with the changes that we're seeing, as Jeff described.
Mr. Rivera?
I'll ask both Mr. Swenson and Mr. Tyne. So is the current model not working?
In my view, the current model is working. And why I say that is if, in the recognition that the city has been providing some support for that, and we are seeing that the Theater Works group has been providing increased programming and services and accountability, we're, we're seeing improvement in that area, and we're seeing also activity more in the, in the Old Town area. So in my own personal view, I think that there is a success. But what I see also is that this has been a continual struggle, that, again, Theater Works has to come every year and request for this funding aspect. And in my view, it seems that if it is our center, and knowing that this arrangement has not structurally worked, we probably need to recognize the ongoing obligation and also have, work with our facilities and community services staff to really probably start assuming that. So in my view, it is working, but we can improve on that.
But I was under, the understanding that when we had this discussion last year, that last year's request would be the, what was needed to give Theater Works a boost?
Mayor and council, the funding that was provided last year was needed for, in my opinion, for Theater Works to be helping support the Center for Performing Arts, and I think they would need that again in the future. It is the boost that they would need.
Okay, I understand that, but last year, what I understood was, that was the need, that, the boost that they needed. I was never under the impression that this was going to be ongoing.
Mayor and council, I believe that the sense from the city staff was that there was a structural issue that was here. I think there were some amongst the council that did look at this, that they would expect for the arrangement to change over time, but I think the staff's sense was that this is a structural problem that has existed and probably would continue.
Okay. And what is, you mentioned two different types of tenants. Can you please explain again what the difference would be?
Yes, yes, sir. So as it stands now, the arrangement as a master tenant, Theater Works as an entity would be responsible for all operational costs for the center, and that includes taking all of the utility costs, taking on any of the facility maintenance costs. They have quite a bit of obligations beyond just the programming. In looking at this arrangement, the suggestion would be that the city, in a number of different ways, it hasn't been decided, it could be through a third-party administrator, through the city operation, would assume that center. We would assume the responsibility for utilities and for the maintenance, but we would work with partners like Theater Works to help serve on the programming aspect. So I think that's, that's kind of the distinction.
So we would pick up the costs, is that the distinction?
We would ultimately, down the road, within, say, three years, the expectation in this model would be that the city would assume that operation. We would pick up the ongoing obligation for that.
And at that point, who runs the theater?
The, the city would run the theater.
So Theater Works, the organization, the nonprofit, would no longer exist in three years?
My sense was that Theater Works would continue, and in my opinion, because of what we're seeing as a success story, I would hope that Theater Works would continue as an operation primarily to support the programming of important community theater and other aspects that they-
I understand, they have a, I'm not sure if it's a 15- or 20-year lease, so Theater Works, in your conversations, obviously you've had some conversations, is willing to forego that lease?
Well, this would be a discussion that we would have to have with the council. For this arrangement to work, we would have to change the existing lease. And that, that's one of the points to bring out, is that this is an assumption that if the city did provide that funding to Theater Works in the next year or so, we would continue with that lease, but probably have some other provisions for oversight and governance.
And is there a possibility that there's going to be other theaters, I mean, other organizations being part of the theater?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe say, yeah, yes, Councilmember Rivera, the, the way we would envision this process going is that the existing lease that the city has with Theater Works would be renegotiated over, over the, the year ahead, as Jeff's described. Ultimately, as the operation of the building transitions to the city, we would expect to be able to broaden the use of the building to other performing arts companies and entities so that there would be other tenants, so to speak, using the building as well. And I believe in that context, we might also see increased revenue back to the city, too, as we're having an opportunity to use dates that are not presently being used by Theater Works to, to other tenants as, as time goes by.
And I recognize that, but at this point, those discussions haven't taken place, and at this point, the request is 350,000, and the idea of moving or reclassifying, reclassifying the type of tenant inside the theater as at the beginning stages, so that could change.
So, I think our sense was that if this, if the council were to go with the staff recommendation, that the $350,000 would be provided one time, but with stipulations to it. And that would be likely to be negotiated, but likely would include, as we mentioned, some additional sense of oversight. It might mean that there is additional involvement with community services department to ensure that programming is being used or what the decisions are. It includes working with the public works department in the site and such, but that would be something that would be discussed through negotiations. This is just the set aside of the funding to allow us to go through that.
At least for this year, Theater Works is still the master tenant.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And probably next year. Just to be clear, I anticipate this would be about a two-year period.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Yeah, I think you answered part of my question. This money is set aside and the council has to approve it, and I, I want more than just hearing you say, you know, they've, they've done well and so forth. I, I want to see how they, how they have improved and how they're moving toward self-sufficiency. Some of the numbers you threw out, it sounds like they're already there, 85% and 40% and... So this would probably, we'd probably have an executive session on this, I would think, probably at one point, and, and then a study session.
Again, we will work closely with the city attorney. Obviously, if it does qualify within one of the seven criteria of, of an exec session, such as contractual agreements, then yes, it would be able to go to exec session.
And because when we ended last year, it was, you know, it was presented as a one-time funding so they could get off their feet more, and I'm glad to hear all the new programming and so forth, but I want to see how that has changed the, the revenues and the ability for, for them to support themselves. So, okay. But this is just a set aside at this point. As- point. As, a lot of the budget is, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this for a minute. The Peoria Center for the, for the performing arts is the city's building. And as you said, almost all cities who have centers for the performing arts, support them. Pay the utilities, make sure the walls are clean and patched and painted, and take care of those kinds of things, obviously. Now, we haven't been doing that for many, many, many years. But when we built this building, it was the height of the great economic boom. And we thought that this was going to be the key, the key function, the key criteria for downtown revitalization. It was, it was a really good idea, and it continues to be a good idea. Unfortunately, there has been a huge, huge lag in economic development. It is not the fault of Theater Works, certainly, and it's not the fault of the city. But other developments were not able to occur around it, to stimulate theater, to stimulate the businesses, and vice versa, to have that kind of cohesive draw that it should have had, that everybody expected it to have. So, as time has gone on, we have, we have sort of been in this lull that, you know, community theater, above all other businesses, has a very, very difficult time to sustain without anybody else around them. If there had been more economic development in downtown, maybe, maybe this would have changed by now, but there hasn't. But as time goes on, there will be. Our downtown is not lost. Our downtown will, will be revitalized at some point, and this will continue to be a key component of it. I thoroughly believe in that plan. I believe that it's going to happen. But we need to sustain our building. It's our responsibility. It's our building. Theater Works has been a great tenant and has worked really, really, really hard to try to accomplish what the original goal was prior to an economic downturn that, that a lot of businesses could not survive. So, I think that we need to continue to support them until we can get over this hump. Again, it's our building. The city of Peoria owns it. The, the voters voted to have that building built. And I think they expect us to make sure that that building stays in good condition, until which time it can accomplish the goal of downtown revitalization. So, I support this, not only for this year, but for next year, and until downtown gets revitalized.
Thank you. I, I think one of the things that gets overlooked by, by the council i- is, is how the whole operation works. I agree, the, the hope and the thought initially, when, when the building was built, and it was authorized by voters, and it was, it was built, was that it would revitalize downtown. You know, it'd bring a lot of people downtown. You know, the restaurants would be built and everything else. The economy crashed. That didn't happen. But I think what's overlooked mostly by, by the council overall, and specifically in relation to last year, is that, that Theater Works itself is maintaining the whole building, paying for all the power costs, paying for all the maintenance and upkeep, landscaping and everything else. And that's a higher cost, I think, than anyone really realized would happen. In addition to that, they have to pay for all the programming. You know, the plays that they put on don't come free. They have to pay a fee in order to have a play. It isn't free. It isn't like high school where you can just go ahead and do West Side Story. No, these guys have to pay for the rights to do that. So, that happens, too. Now, on top of, on, on top of all that, I, I think what we're missing is that we gave them more money last year, and we made demands on them. You have to do additional programming. Well, they did that. But the additional programming doesn't come free either. The comedian that came in for a couple of days and the other programs they have in, in the center, aren't free. They have to split the house with these guys, and they have to pay them to come in. So, maybe what we've imposed upon them is an additional expense in some cases. Because, because of the way we set it up and the things that we demand, they're not always filling that theater. And because they're not always filling the theater, they're not making a profit. It's, it's a cost. So, I think that's what most of us are overlooking here. I think it's critical. It is, it is a city building. The, the voters maintained it. I think the set aside for making, discovering a new model over the next couple of years is a good idea. And I think that's how we have to proceed. Because to close the building is foolish, beyond, beyond belief. I mean, Grand Avenue has enough closed buildings already. One more is, you know, it'd be, it'd be a terrible thing to do. And if that happens, if Theater Works folds, we still have to pay for maintenance. So, we're not going to get out from under a cost, regardless of what happens. So, I think, I think this program gradually, make, make the transition to a new model, renegotiate the lease, the lease terms, and who's responsible for what, with a realistic view, I think is a great idea. And eventually, the city can take over part of the programming for the building. I think that makes perfect sense. James?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there are costs. Any, any business has a cost. And we requested that, some additional programs. And if we're doing additional programs, and it increases your costs, and you don't get any profit out of it, then we want to wonder about those programs and look at other programs. But I, I think the council is okay with this being a holder in the budget, and we're going to discuss it as we discuss other things, and look for the best solution.
Questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, to your point, I think it's an opportunity down the road here in the near future to get before you in a study session, or as appropriate session, to discuss further. I do want to iterate or reiterate what's provided in the budget, is that traditionally, we've provided through general fund a, an approximate amount of $100,000 for general operating grant support. That is not before you as a recommendation from staff at this point, because of the discussions that we're having with Theater Works, as well as with Arizona Broadway Theater. So, you'll recognize that delta in the current operating budget, general fund budget, that that approximate $100,000 has not come forward as a recommendation. But that it is staff recommendation, that we consider that previous grant, operating grant, as part of all of these discussions that we have with both Theater Works and Arizona Broadway Theater. Okay. We will exit stage left.
Are you done?
Did you have another?
I always have my general question about the trend, trend line here. And your department's been growing...
Here. I do have the Recreation Division to go through.
Oh, you're not done?
Yeah. This was just the, the little sidestep to the stage.
I thought, I thought you said you were...
And then, we've got Recreation Division, as well as Special Events, and, and at that point.
Yeah, I want to ask my question.
Fair? At the end? Okay. Great. So, as always, a picture's worth a thousand words. And from breakdancing to hiking with alpacas, Brenda Ranky, our Recreation Manager, leads the team of creative and dedicated professionals that truly impact our citizens' lives. The diverse program mix is designed to offer unique and fun experiences. And as you recall, the adopted, council adopted the Recreation and Fees Pricing Policy in 2012. This policy identifies specific cost recovery targets for each program area. And as such, you will see that there's slight or modest increases in Rio Vista Rec Center fees, as well as the youth sports fees. And those fall right in line with the council policy as adopted in 2012. All of that will come before you in the near future as a agenda item for action as well. So, the budget additions this year, again, are focused on the services and amenities reinvestment, maintaining program offerings, and the repair of our recreation and facilities. So, here we have the new AMPM site at the Sunset Heights Park, or Sunset Heights School, as well as a number of others that are tied directly to replacement of equipment as, and improving maintenance at our swimming pools. Now, all of the maintenance of the pools are shared with the Peoria Unified School District.
Could you back up? Department of Developmental Disabilities After School Program, no funding?
I might need help on how to describe this best. It's not a request, it's a capacity. The zero is a capacity.
Yes, last year, we requested money to start a young program for disability children. And through D, DHSD, DESDD, we would not be able to start that program. So, what we're going to do is start a teen program over at the community center. So, it's a wash, basically, the last booster.
So, this is where we're re-titling the purpose and the direction of those funds. It looks great, though, zero. All right. So, we'll jump right into Special Events. Whether it's being attacked by big monsters, or playing around in the snow, Peoria has it all. And we do have, provided for you, a breakout of a number of the events and the calendar as proposed. The city's special events are highlighted under this next sess, the next section. And, you know, you've seen this slide before over the past several years. As a strategy for building community, enhancing artistic and cultural expression, preserving and expanding the quality of life in Peoria, and energizing the city's economic development initiatives, special events have played a key role in the council policies.
Let me just add a, a comment there. And of course, the council's well aware, we've expanded our programming in special events over the last few years. And, and that's a real important step that the city has taken. For many years, our community building in Peoria was focused primarily on the, the infrastructure, the hardscape of a city, building the, the roads, the parks, the buildings, the facilities that make for the city. Over the last few years, as we've expanded our special events, we're really focusing on the, the social aspect of building the city, of building the community. And, and that's real important. And I think, as you, as you'll see in some of the slides coming up, it's been a very successful and positive trend line, that we're, we're seeing a lot of attendance at these events and a growing attendance. And I think it's something that we should all feel real good about. And, and finding our way to continue funding for these events is real important. With that, I'll turn back to James.
Thank you, Carl. So, per our discussions over the past several months concerning the council policy on special events, we've defined the different classifications for the city's special events. I'll touch on each of these as we go through the next few slides. The city's signature events are those events that have a distinguishing theme and are significantly recognized from across the city. And this is a list depicting from the Fourth of July to the most recent Grill Fest, and the different partners that go into the signature events. Just last Saturday, we had the P-83 party, had a great number, it was a good time, a lot of citizens out enjoying beautiful weather. Here's a list of the various community events that Community Services has led or played an important role in delivering. You'll note on the supplemental, the one-time request, that Park Fest is again a recommendation with a slightly higher allocation to include two more neighborhood parks, along with them, an Arts in the Park program element. And we also have the promoter-produced events. These are a number of events that the promoter truly takes the lead, and has established the, the event theme, the event structure, the event budget. And so, Community Services plays a role in different ways, and most importantly, in that these are all festivals or activities that park, are, are conducted on city property. So, we'd like to take a scan, and this is the graph that, that Carl was talking about, as we've seen over the past several years, an increase in event attendance. We really face a few key challenges when we, when we look at designing events and conducting them across the city, one of which is the limited venues up north. We continue to establish strong partnerships to provide the unique experiences up in the northern area. And another is marketing. Each event requires a unique marketing and communications plan. And that takes a lot of effort, a lot of professionalism, and in some cases, professional resources. In circumstances like the Fourth of July, it's hugely popular. We plan to ensure that we do not become victims of our own success. Having big crowds in one area at one time takes a lot of logistics, and we rely on our friends at the Peoria Police Department, as well as the Fire Department, to ensure that public safety stays priority. With an increased number and frequency of the city events, staff resources is a concern. As we add more events, there's only so many hours in the week that we can make them work. While our team definitely digs in and stays late, Matt was here till 3:00 in the morning cleaning up P-83. So, there's, there's definitely the staff resources is a logistical challenge. Partnerships, we continue to develop partnerships. Friends at Arizona Broadway Theater, Theater Works, the, up at the lake, we've also established the Third of July event, a partnership role up at the lake. Timing and preparation, sometimes we have ideas, they can come about, but we want to make sure that we have enough time and preparation goes into each of the event. And of course, funding. While we, as a staff, certainly look to you and recognize the value in delivering special and cultural events to the community, we're cautious and prudent to balance the ongoing versus the one-time designations of our funding sources. And that's what you'll see, is we have this slide depicting the one-time funded events and the one, or the, and the ongoing funded events that have been the traditionally funded. As demonstrated through your leadership over the past several years, it truly rounds out the investment that we're making in the community special events area. We also, and we may come back to this one, we also have a recommendation for those affiliate events that we've been talking about through the discussion on the council policy. This is a list, staff-generated list of, of events that we're aware of, that have traditionally received an element of support from the, from the city. And budget team has identified a capacity of approximately $50,000 that can be allocated to these or other potential affiliate events. And with that, I did catch you guys dancing onstage.
I, I really liked that one graph you had, showing the revenues we have coming in on some of those. Can you be sure to send, send me that one?
One more.
Yeah. So, our biggest revenue is our Fourth of July, right?
Correct, of the events.
And that doesn't include all the people that go off and eat around the area and all of that, right? Because that one has that to it. Some of the others don't.
We do not account for that revenue, Vice Mayor. That, this, these are directly associated with sponsorship.
I'm happy with the way you do it.
Okay. Yeah. But, yeah, we do not include tax dollars from the external businesses on this presentation.
You're open for all questions now?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, you know, I think I see where some of this is, is increased. But your department, in terms of support, has grown 30% in three years. So, that, that's quite a bit. You had 22.7 million in '12, and now, the next budget's 29.3 million. And that's, so that's a 6.6 million growth. And, yeah. And I know I'm hearing some of the things, these additional festivals are part of that, right? And what are, are there other cost areas that, I kind of looked down the list, and almost everything seems to go up. And I know you've added employees, because we had new parks, like Pioneer Park, and so that, that's part of it, too. Do you see this kind of leveling off at all, or is it going to continue to?
Well, as we see, Vice Mayor, the, the continued growth in our neighborhood parks, the continued participation at facilities like the Rio Vista Rec Center and the Community Center, we've done the right things in establishing the, the pricing policy to help with the revenue side. As far as the expenditures, as we add acreage and as we add amenities, that equates to dollar additions. So, our, our role is to make sure that they're prudent...
In terms of staff and so forth. That's, the capital budget is...
As, as the capital budget provides those, and, and, you know, it's important to note that as those capital budgets come online, we're very much in line with making sure that those, as we call it, the operating tail, is programmed on the ongoing basis.
One, one specific one I'm looking at, and you know it's important to me, the landscaping maintenance. And that's worked real well over the last eight years or so.
Mm-hmm.
But we had a little dip this year, right? And, but you're on top of that again, because that's really important. I know we talk about neighborhoods, and that's one of the most critical things. If the wraparound of your neighborhood, the right-ofways around it doesn't look good, then people shy away from those neighborhoods. For example, when realtors bring people, they say, "I don't want to go into that area," even, even though the houses may look the same as in a different, different area. So, I'm happy, but I, I want to look carefully at, at that and make sure through the years that we're doing an outstanding job, not only of keeping the right-ofways looking good, but improving them, some of the walls, and some trees, and so forth. I haven't seen as much in terms of additional trees lately.
I, Vice Mayor, I believe Andy presented last night the Community Works program. And within that, we did identify the right tree, right place. And again, that's addressing a few of the issues in the right-ofway areas. And we also have established a quick response for right-of-way maintenance. So, it's a capacity that's outside of the contracts that are for those, the... So it's a capacity that's outside of the contracts that are for those, the two companies. And that's another strategy that we've implemented. We used to have, a couple of years ago, one contractor taking care of the whole city. We have split the city and are measuring the effectiveness. We meet very frequently, and we do have a right-of-way contract coordinator who is daily out inspecting and identifying, and in some cases, as demonstrated most recently with some concern, demonstrating, giving them clear direction on what areas to achieve first and foremost. So maintenance is, by all means, for us, a high priority.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Rivera.
Mr. Sefton, can you go back to the list of promoter events? As you know, I've worked on Fiesta Peoria the last two years. And my goal was bringing back Fiesta Peoria to the city of Peoria. It had been going on for over two decades, in the '90s and the '80s. But because this may be my last year on the council, I want to pass the torch to the city. And I would like the council to approve, or consider approving, making Fiesta Peoria a signature event and making it a part of the ongoing budget. And I look forward to meeting with you one-on-one. One of the things that I've been thinking about is, obviously, I want to continue being involved, but at the same time, trying to find sponsors that could donate directly to the city to reduce the cost of Fiesta Peoria. But at this moment, I would like council to consider making Fiesta Peoria part of the budget ongoing as a signature event, starting with this upcoming September. And the request would be for $100,000 for the upcoming year. That's the first thing. The second event that I am looking at, I have questions about, is the multicultural festival. Are you making recommendations in regards to how much money should be allocated to this event?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rivera. At this point, and where we've been with the council policy, we have a process identified in there and how outside user groups or outside promoters would present to the city as a whole to be able to request that affiliated status. And since we do not necessarily know what the ask is for these, we did not put a dollar number to all of these other than that short amount of $50,000 to be able to allocate to each of them. So we have not, because we don't necessarily know the ask specifically on these different.
So how is that being considered if we just recently had the discussion with, amongst the council about the policy? Where does that put those organizations that are interested in asking for support? Aren't they behind the curve at this point?
Councilmember, I think that we would be today behind the curve. Our goal, I think, was to have that defined and wrapped up long before tonight. But that, within that, we had the caveat of if events, or if they were, met the certain criteria, that they would be able to come forward to request on an individual basis. And I thought we had some pretty good conversation about that being within the procedure.
Then I'm going to ask you, if you could please reach out to the organizations who have put on events in the past and let them know about what's going on. I was under the understanding that the council policy wasn't yet approved as it hasn't gone to council for the general consideration.
Correct, it is not finally approved. So again, it's within the structure, as we've discussed, but it has not received your final consensus.
So I won't make a request for the Northwest Black History Committee then as it will go through its approved process that council has dictated. But I would like the city council to consider making Fiesta Peoria an ongoing event at the signature level.
Mayor and council, just to kind of help keep track of some of these items, we are going to start keeping track of them right over here and just have a board of some of the things that we hear from you as we go through this. Just on a side note on this, I just wanted to, part of the issue on all of these two will be depending upon the type of things and services that they require on each event. Some of those are in-kind, and some of those are actual, needing some financial, some actual dollars appropriated. So as John mentioned, we've identified a total of $50,000 to be spread across these affiliated events as those requests come in or until council has a very specific policy in place for how those events, how they would request that.
And just for clarification, $50,000 doesn't include the rental fees of the parks, facilities? Does that also include?
That would be inclusive in total. Now, whether it falls under, you know, an in-kind contribution or it has to be paid for, like in some cases, those events have items that we have to pay for, permits or things like that that have to be paid for. Those are real dollars and things that we need to have the appropriation to do, things like that.
So this is $50,000 real dollars?
It's potentially $50,000 real dollars, yes. Or some of it could be in-in-kind dollars. That's also part of that.
Okay.
Does that?
I'm still kind of confused how it could be potentially.
Well, we don't know what the asks are. So I guess the point is, is that some of these, council, you have a policy and you've sort of set a threshold for a lot of these.
But there's $50,000 real dollars available.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, there is $50,000 real dollars that could be applied.
Mr. Leone.
Hold on a second. So what's the process in regards to keeping a list of items? How is that going to be considered?
So we'll take inventory of all these things as you come up. So you've just made a request on Fiesta's Peoria as an ongoing. And these are things that we would have to do some reconciliation on in terms of the total budget. So I know that there will be other ones. This is just kind of, we'll start here. And as we wrap up discussions and have the wrap-up, more of those, I'm sure, we'll have some discussion about.
Not just special events?
Not just special events, any other things that may come up that council wants to talk about as we've done in years past. You know, how we reconcile all of that across the total budget.
But in this case, it's two requests, it's the ongoing status and the signature?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Carla.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is just a comment. I'd just like to say that the event people are doing a great job. I know they work hard, and we have a lot of events coming up. Like I told you earlier, I still think we need more. Events get people together and, you know, they talk to each other, get to know them. So I'm all for events, and I just want to mention that, I know Brenda doesn't want to hear any more events, because she does a great job. And it's just great that we have people working for the city doing that. If I was to put money anyplace, I'd put in a neighborhood grant and more events. And I know we had two events in my area, which is not on here, Country Meadows. And I got one coming up in Scotland Yard. And this brings the people again, like I said before, and it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the city of Peoria, because not only people in city Peoria comes in, but they're coming from all over the area. So I just want to say thank you to your events, and they get extra money, let's put it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Change your mic? Oh, okay. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Mr. Edwards, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also thank the special events group. You guys do a tremendous job, it goes without saying. But I'd also like to propose moving P-83 to, from a one-time event or one-time expense to an ongoing expense. Last week's performance showcased the fact that the attendance on this is steadily growing year after year. I think we've turned the corner from, by moving the event to the later time in the season, right after, or right during spring break, the weather was warmer. We don't have the total numbers yet for the attendance, but I know that it was significantly up from last year and years past. So I'd also like to add P-83 to the ongoing budget rather than a one-time fund.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Just to clarify, something like that wouldn't change the budget dollars, right? It would just, it'd be for next year's budget, really?
I'm sorry.
If it's one-time and we make it continue, and it's not going to affect this year's dollars.
Right, so if it's currently proposed as one-time funding, and the council has an interest to move that into an ongoing capacity, we would need to talk about what then comes out of the ongoing capacity in order to be able to fund it as an ongoing. We can continue to fund it as a one-time and look to address that as part of next year's budget so as to not move these things. Or we can, council would have to look at our ongoing items, and we'd probably, you know, start at the ones that are currently ongoing and see if some of those should move to one-time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
But the events are not the only items that the council could consider removing, right? It could be.
Certainly, council could look at other ongoing items that are currently funded if they wanted to move that.
Mayor, on the P-83, rather than $117, I think we can move that down and bring it in probably in the $90,000, because we are getting key sponsors to come on board even for next year. So again, I think we need to lower that number down.
That's right, the net cost. Right, so as you look at this list here, you'll see that we have the expenditure side and the revenue side. So it would be the net of the expenditures and revenues is what we'd be looking at from an ongoing basis.
Other questions? Thank you.
Very good, thank you, John.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and take a 15-minute break. We'll resume at seven o'clock by that clock up there. I point that out because that clock's off a couple minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. The next item, excuse me, the next department we have making a presentation is our Police Department. And of course, you know that we have a very aggressive, community-oriented focus in our Police Department. Chief Minter and his staff are very engaged in and successful with creating partnerships across the community in a whole host of different ways. And that improves the relationship between the Police Department and citizens, which turn into a variety of benefits for public safety in the community that the chief will describe. Let me just give a little bit of an overview of the numbers, excuse me, for the department. There are 292 employees in the Police Department. It's a $40 million budget, $40,800,000 budget. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Minter.
All right, thank you, Carl. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I'm pleased to present- Mayor, before the chief speaks, there was some, a little confusion about the events and the funding that we're still trying to sort out, and so I'm working with staff on that. Just wanted to give you heads up.
Well, we'll do the reconciliation work then with this.
That's fine. I just wanted to give a heads up.
All right, go ahead, Chief, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased this evening to present the Police Department's 2015 budget. This budget addresses the critical needs of the department through the general fund and alternate funding sources such as state and federal asset forfeiture funds. This budget also reflects our continued commitment to the goals you have set and the goals I established for the department. Just as a quick reminder of the Police Department's goals. The three goals I established for the department are to reduce crime and the fear of crime, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. But also to operate the department with maximum efficiency, and that is making the best use of our technology, our data-driven crime reduction and deployment models, also being fiscally sound in the management of our finances in the Police Department. A couple of the slides you'll see there kind of points to our third goal, which is to partner with the community to identify and solve problems. You see a couple of photos there from some recent events, the Coffee with the Cop event back in February. And our most recent event, last Friday, the Walk to School event in the Varney area where we had over 300 people participating in that event. So I'm really proud of the men and women of the Peoria Police Department, and we're really making headway into several communities throughout the city. The other thing I talked about was one of our most important goals, and that is to reduce crime and the fear of crime in neighborhoods throughout the city. I'm proud to report that 2013 was a very good year for us. If you'll see, violent crime in the city was reduced by 14%. Property crime was reduced by 18%. We had an overall reduction in violent and property crime of almost 18% total in the city. As far as the budget itself, the budget that is being presented to you, the budget changes itself are going to be highlighted, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. But the first one we're going to talk about is the Super Bowl coverage and the Super Bowl that'll be coming up. What you'll see on the slides that are coming up, Mayor and Council, are the budget changes and the ones that are highlighted in the presentation slides are the ones that kind of reflect our top funding request. There are a few other supplemental requests that are listed in the book, most of which are being funded through those alternate sources which I talked about earlier. I'll start with the Super Bowl. Of course, February 1st of 2015, the Super Bowl will occur right next door to us in Glendale. Of course, I'm sure you're aware, we assisted with the Super Bowl back in 2008, and we'll also be assisting Glendale PD again in February. Also, not only Glendale, but other local, state, and federal agencies with this event in February. This funding request is to cover anticipated overtime calls for personnel working the event and personnel who may be needed to assist with the calls for service volume in the city and also traffic control in and around the city. The next funding request that you see there, Mayor and Council, is for an over-hire request for additional police officers. To give you a little background on this, in the next three years, we have 14 sworn members who are scheduled to retire from the Peoria Police Department. Five of these retirements will occur between July of this year and August of 2015. We've identified funding for three of these five positions in this current year's budget, and we're asking for, requesting funding for the two additional positions in this upcoming budget.
Do I have a question?
Go ahead.
Is that sort of recruiting or?
That amount. No, that amount is actually salary and benefits for the officers who'll be hired. Oh, the difference? Yes. Okay. The next funding request has to do with body-worn cameras. Give you a little background on this. The expectation of the public in the area of recording events that police departments are involved in is steadily increasing. Just to give you an idea of some of the other law enforcement agencies who are also looking at the similar type of technology. The City of Surprise Police Department has done a full deployment. All their officers are now wearing body-worn cameras. They purchased about eight of them through their budget process last year. Mesa has purchased 50, and they have identified funding for another 300 units that they'll be purchasing. Last week, the Tempe Police Chief went before his city council and got approval for 124 body-worn cameras for his officers. Gilbert has purchased 32, and they're looking at a funding request for an additional 100 cameras. And Scottsdale currently has 12 cameras. Some of the other agencies who are also testing body-worn cameras are Phoenix, Chandler, and then on a national basis, the Los Angeles Police Department, New Orleans, Albuquerque, San Diego, Daytona Beach, Cleveland, San Francisco, and also Salt Lake City. Just to give you an example of why several law enforcement agencies across the country are looking at this new technology. Mesa did a 12-month study with Arizona State University. They had 50 cameras that they deployed to officers out in the field. They saw a 40% decrease in citizen complaints and a 75% decrease in use-of-force complaints on officers. Rialto, California, also did a 12-month study. They saw an 87% decrease in citizen complaints and a 59% decrease in use-of-force complaints. So we feel this is a technology that will be, has the potential to be very beneficial to our organization, so we're requesting funding to move forward with the purchase and deployment of 54 cameras. The next item you see there are RSA tokens. Give you a little background on exactly what RSA tokens are. RSA tokens are the tokens that are used for the computers. These tokens are used by Police Department officers and other staff members who use the laptop computers in cars, and they provide security authentication for the users to access the network remotely. Basically, we're going to allow them to take the computers out of the cars, and they take them out often, they go into businesses, they may go into a residence and actually start the report. If they're going to do that, we have to have some way of securing that information and making sure that there's no unauthorized access to those computers. We're requesting funding for 255 tokens. And the reason why we're doing it now is these tokens have about a four-year life, so we're at the end of the life cycle for the ones we currently have, so we're going to need to replace the 255 RSA tokens that we currently have. And with that, those are the major funding requests for the Police Department's budget. I'll take any questions you have right now regarding our budget.
Thank you, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I know that you're asking for two police officers. Public safety is a top priority for Peoria. Do you feel even with those two officers that you will be then adequately staffed?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Patena, what you see identified there are two over-hire positions. Those are not additional positions. Those are over-hire positions to replace the officers who will be retiring. What we're asking to do is, it takes about 18 months for us to hire, recruit, train a police officer, and what we're trying to do is to try and get ahead of the curve. So we know we've got these officers that are coming up on retirement. So what we'd like to do is go ahead and hire people, get them trained, get them onboard, and then when these officers retire, we already have officers to fill those authorized positions. So those are not additional positions.
But then, do you feel you have enough, so to speak, feet on the street?
Yes, yes, I do. If you look at some of our statistical data, I mean, our crime is down dramatically. Our calls for service are down, our clearance rates are up, our arrests are up. And when we also look at some of the things that we're using as force multipliers, technology, one of the things that I talked to the council about recently was our new online reporting system, CopLogic. We're already up to one hundred and fifty-four reports that citizens are filing. Those are reports that if the citizens didn't file them online, we'd probably have to dispatch a police officer, too. Now, one of the things that I want to make sure that the mayor and council is aware of is we are constantly reviewing and deploying our staffing and reviewing our staffing and deployment strategies. So if at any point in time we feel that our staffing becomes an issue, we'll make sure that we bring that before you and make sure that it's addressed.
Mr. Leon.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Yeah, I just want to comment a couple of questions. I like what you're doing with the events with Coffee with the Cops and the rodeo and the Shop of the Cops. I think it's great. Just keep it up. You're doing a great job on that. What I want to know is, on these parks, we have security there?
We have park rangers assigned to the parks.
Now, I got an email and a couple of calls from the Snoop Park in Peoria Pioneer, and they all like it. It's a great park. They like the way it's made, the eighty-five acres and the fishing and everything else. But the complaint is that even though we get a dog park, they don't use it. This guy said, the guy was walking his dog. All the kids are playing, not picking up after him. I don't know. I haven't seen it in the budget. Are you going to hire any more park rangers?
Mayor and council member Leonie, we do not have a funding request in this budget to hire any additional park rangers. One of the things that we're doing, that's one of the other areas where we're constantly reviewing our staffing, and we're also, I'm also in discussions with John Sefton, our community services director, to see what, if any, technology components we may be able to put in place to assist us in security and other issues that may be going on around the park. The other thing I wanted to discuss with you, I know earlier you brought up a concern about homeless individuals around the trail system. I want to tell you, that's been one of our priorities recently, and one of the things that we've been doing is partnering with Debbie Pearson in her new position, because one of the things that we're doing is identifying those areas and not just going in and addressing that issue from an enforcement standpoint, but from a standpoint of what assistance can we provide to these folks. So anytime we become, we were made aware of those types of incidents, we're going out and aggressively addressing those matters. So if you're aware of any of those areas that we may have missed, please pass that information on to us.
Yeah. Thank you. Let me, let me get back to the parks. We had a birthday party at Peoria Park, my great-grandson, and I saw one of your security driving by, park ranger. My wife says, "Don't they get a car and walk around and see what's going on?" And I says, I, and I know at Rio Vista, I saw them do it. I don't know if they still do it. My question is, why can't we get them out of the truck, put them on a bicycle, and on a ride? It's eighty-four acres. They'll have a nice ride around, get some good exercise. So that was one of my questions. The other question is that I'm off for hiring two more park rangers for that area because that's a big park, and even if you ride a bike, you know, it's going to take quite a while to get around, and you can see what's really happening, what these people walking the dogs and, and they're dropping everything there and not even picking them up. And this is what getting people upset about it. And that's one of my questions, and the, and the other thing is that I think they should be riding a bicycle through the park, and hopefully that we could do something about it. You know, someone told me that, why can't we get maybe code compliance go through there every now and then and take a look and see what's going on? I know the police goes through there every now and then, but you know, if we get code compliance through there, walking around, if we don't have enough park rangers. So that's my concern, not only that park, but also Rio Vista. I think Rio Vista's been okay because they haven't done anything about it. It's this new one that I'm getting all the feedback on. Okay?
Absolutely. Mayor and council member Leonie, what I can tell you is, we've always encouraged our folks to spend as much time as possible outside of their vehicles, and that also includes our park rangers. The majority of them, I think, all of them are bike certified, so I know they're riding bikes in different areas, but I'll check to make sure that they're also using those capabilities in all the parks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rangus.
Yeah, I'm pleased to see that technology and other productivity and community involvement and being proactive and all of those things have brought our crime rates down, and, and I think you're absolutely right. You want, you want to look at those multipliers and productivity and technology as, as a way to do your, do your job, and I think you've been doing that very well, rather than just adding, 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 because it all has to come together, and you have to achieve those goals, and you're doing that, and I really appreciate it. I'm, I'm looking at the, there was discussion about new police. You have two eighty-nine and fourteen and two ninety-two. Does that come mostly from that federal grant? Is that, that's what that is?
Correct.
That increase. So there is an increase.
Yes, there's an increase of three through the COPS funding grant. Just to give the council the, an update, all three of those positions have been hired. Two of those officers are currently in the academy. They started in February. Those officers will graduate in June. We had another third officer who started two weeks ago. That officer will start the training program out on the road next week. So all three of those COPS position, COPS grant-funded position have been filled.
You done? Okay. Ms. Carlet.
Thanks. I just had a question about the Super Bowl expense with regards to the City of Glendale and the legislation, the, the state legislation. Do you think that we're going to see any revenue reimbursement from that?
I, I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure how that's going to go. We're, we're moving forward in anticipation that it may not occur, so if it doesn't, we'd like to at least have a funding mechanism identified.
Did you come up with this calculation based on our input into the last Super Bowl?
Absolutely. We looked at our overtime expenditures for the last Super Bowl, and we were right around fourteen thousand dollars. And then we had another incident that occurred during the Super Bowl week, an overtime that caused us to spend about four thousand dollars in overtime.
I remember that incident. Thank you.
And council member, council member Carlet, if there is an opportunity to seek reimbursement, we will certainly do so.
Ms. Rivera.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. Do you have a, any information in regards to training? And I know training is very important in the police department. How do you feel we're doing in that area?
I think we're doing well. A couple of things that we're doing this year is we kind of modified our training, and we took a look at those critical areas there where we may not have been providing a adequate level of training in the past, and looked at some of the, our high liability areas as far as training. And I'll, I'll give you an example. One of the things that we had not done in quite some time is any type of driving training for officers. So this year, all sworn officers on the department, including the chief, I went out last month, went out to the driving track in Phoenix-
I heard you did bad, by the way. That's, that's a joke. Yeah, I'm joking.
There were, there were a couple of combs that didn't cooperate. That's the best way I could put it. But every sworn member of the department went out and participated and got additional training in the area of driving. The other thing we're looking at is providing additional training in the area of defensive tactics. One of the things that we do on a, on a regular basis is have hands-on contact with folks, so we're also providing additional training in that area. We're providing additional management and leadership training to members of the department, so we've identified several critical areas that we're moving forward with in the area of training.
Okay. Last question is, is there any concern about gangs in, in the City of Peoria? I know in the past, I believe there was a, a division, not a division, but it was a group of officers who were tasked with, with that, with that issue.
Yes, and I, I know exactly what you're talking about. We do have an officer who's currently assigned to the state gang task force. That officer, we meet with him on a monthly basis and get update on any gang activity in the area. We are not seeing any identified gang activity that causes any significant concern here in Peoria. But that officer is keeping a really close eye on it. He's making sure that he forwards that information to all department members on a regular basis.
Okay. And lastly, I, I wanted to ask, I know the, the City of Peoria collaborates with other agencies. Do you consider, do you foresee more collaboration with other agencies across the valley on different initiatives?
Oh, absolutely. We, as the chiefs, meet on a monthly basis, the West Valley Chiefs Association, but we've also expanded our partnerships. It's, it's not just the chiefs. The lieutenants are meeting on a regular basis, and one of the things that we have not been doing in quite some time that we're in the process of setting up is setting up regular monthly meetings where we can share our crime data across jurisdictional lines. So we've got a little better understanding of what the crime looks like in Glendale, Phoenix, Surprise, El Mirage. So the crime analysts are working on getting together and really meeting on a more regular basis so we can do a better job of monitoring and sharing crime data.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
The next presentation is our fire department, and Chief Bobby Reese will make that presentation. Our fire department has a hundred and sixty-eight point five FTEs, and the total budget for the department is twenty-four million thirty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Good evening, mayor, council members. What you're seeing in front of you there in the slide is our newest piece of equipment in, on the, in our fleet. Finally updated. So we do need money. Our org chart looks like this. We have seven divisions in, in the department. Fire administration is, is basically the overall leadership and direction and support of the department, mainly myself and a couple of my assistants. Fire prevention is the area that we do inspections, we do plans review, issue permits, code enforcement, arson investigations, and public education. Support Services is responsible for the facility and equipment maintenance and repair. Emergency Medical Services supply, provide all the training and acquisition of medical supplies, all our medical training, our, for our paramedics, and maintain certifications that are required through the state. The Training Section provides training for fire suppression, rescue training, all the specialized kind of things that we do, like hazardous materials and technical training. The Emergency Management Area is point five of a person. That takes care of our training for the EOC on a yearly basis and, and maintains that EOC on a regular basis, goes to regional meetings and stays up with, with any of the changes. Our Operations Division is, is our biggest division. That is everything we go on from fires to, to rescues and, and all the training that's involved with, with keeping our, our troops safe and especially in those incidents that are high-risk and low-frequency that we need to stay up on a regular basis. Our council goals that we're meeting is customer service enhance, enhance our current services, leadership and image, and I'm pretty proud of some of those things in those areas, such as our ninety-eight percent approval rating from the citizens, our state certification as a premier EMS provider, and also recognized through the Arizona Department of, of Health Services as a heart-safe city this year. Our outcomes, emergency response times, we are responding and meeting national response times of under five minutes ninety percent of the time. The other ten percent of the time is because we go outside the city in the automatic aid system, and so that kind of skews the, the, the response times, but we're still keeping those at five and a half minutes. Training, legal compliance, we keep up with, with all the state, local, and national requirements for training. One example is the fire training under the ISO. They require a hundred and twenty hours a, a year just in firefighting alone. So we do a lot of training, and, and that's not to include all the emergency medical training that, that is required by the state of Arizona. The proactive fire prevention and inspections, we keep up with new construction inspections and everything that goes along with that. We do a lot of the public education and keep the, the public educated on everything from, from fires to smoke detectors to CPR and the latest CCR, which is hands-only compressions. Our department mission is we are committed to protecting and caring for our neighbors, our guests, and each other while maintaining the community's trust and respect through superior life safety services. Our budget this year is, is the objectives that we're hitting is to maintain our service levels and to keep our health and safety at the, the highest level that we can. Our new budget additions are four. The first one is a lake rescue swimming program. As you know, eighty-five percent of our business is emergency medical services, and at the lake, actually those percentages in, in the medical demand is a lot, a lot higher. We're not seeing that much fire as, as, as we do in, in the general area of Peoria proper. So that's a big demand is, is the emergency medical calls. We're, we're receiving a lot of rescue calls at the lake. The sheriff's office is backing off on, on some of the hours that, that they spend out there. They're, they're calling it off at eight o'clock at night, which is, you know, a, a real challenge for us. The lake rescue program will also comply with NFPA sixteen seventy that has requirements as to if you're conducting any kind of surface rescues. And so that includes a eighty-hour program that puts them through exercises, evaluates even their swimming abilities, because that's something we kind of take for granted, and, and we have not had training on, on surface rescues. It also supplies them with equipment such as basic stuff like wet suits, some snorkel equipment and a mask and fins and, and a rescue board. I said a, a boogie board earlier, but Sefton corrected me and said it's a rescue board, so it is a rescue board. So-
We have a question. Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Chief, can you, on your lake rescue program, you talk about surface rescue. What, what about under-the-surface rescue? Because I, I've been reading a lot in the paper lately where we've had drownings, where, you know, we've had to do recovery, not, not, not your, your department, but do you see you guys getting more involved in that, and, and do we have the funding to, to maybe start additional programs so that we can help with underwater rescues? Because the lake obviously is, is getting used more and more every year, and, and unfortunately, I, I see those, those types of rescues increasing.
Mayor, Councilman Edwards, it's in, in our planning, it's an extensive program. When you look at the full submersion program that is out there and the public safety diving curriculum, it has three, three components to it, three parts to it. And the lake, lake rescue swimming program is the first piece of it. The second piece of it is, is an open, open-water diving class, and the third one is a very specific public safety diving course that is about six weeks long. It requires special under, underwater communication equipment, so it's quite pricey, so it's in our future, and I think we're, we're starting to plan for that.
How far in the future are you looking? You know, I, I, I want to be proactive and, and look at this, you know, if, if we can start and, and help save lives now, I think we need to start looking at this program a little bit more in-depth and, and maybe putting some money into the budget to start going to those, those next certification levels.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Edwards, you know, as money permits and resources permits, is, is, we'll, we'll take that on, and, and, you know, we've already found the need where we've done a couple of submersion rescues without the proper equipment, and, and so it's, it's in our planning, and as resources per- and as resources permit, we'll head that direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my question is somewhat similar. Now, the county does that rescuing right now? Is that correct? Because you work with the county. They've got certain responsibilities, and we have other responsibilities, right?
Mayor, Councilman Ames, you're correct. We coordinate the efforts, but whoever gets there first, and the county sheriff's office is, and some are out there doing the police-type work as far as patrol, patrolling the lake for other reasons. If they can get there quicker than we do, then they try to do the rescue. Their dive team is a little bit slower. They're equipped to do body recovery. They're not really designated to do rescues because they can't assemble them quick enough. And so we coordinate. But again, one of the issues right now for us is that they cut off at eight o'clock. And one of the pieces of equipment that we're going to purchase is some night goggle equipment, because for those of you that have done any boating at night and with the big floodlights, it just blinds you. It dilates your eyes and it just blinds you further. Chances are you're going to run over somebody with a boat instead of rescuing them. So the night goggles are very important to drive the boat or steer the boat by night vision.
Okay, yeah, maybe we could, you know, have more of a presentation on how all that is done there and how we might get more involved or get the county more involved.
Mayor, Councilman Ames, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about your paramedic training. I understand that this will cover three, the training for three paramedics. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman Carlott, can I go through the other two bullet points?
Did I jump ahead?
Because they're candy-like. Of course you can.
The county was up for grabs. I'm sorry.
Mayor, Councilman Carlott, we believe that the three will suffice us for this year. We have had some discussion, and we are planning to continue the growth of the training of our medics for the next two, three years to get us to where we need to be.
Where do we need to be?
Yeah, so we've, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Carlott, we've lost some people through attrition and also through some promotions. And so over the next two, three years, we hope that we'll be able to come to about 12 paramedics at that point.
So this will get us three or three more?
Three, well, it will give us three more than we're at presently.
And how many will that be then, total?
We will have 65 total, 62 total.
I think three gets us to 65. Is that correct?
Yes, it gets us to 65. Presently, we have 62.
And so what is the criteria for the population of our city or the landmass? How do you determine how many you need?
We have, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Carlott, Councilwoman Carlott, sorry, is, we have two paramedics per apparatus, except for the ladders. It's their BLS. And so we need two paramedics per apparatus, which we have eight in the fleet, plus enough rovers that are trained as paramedics in order to fill those positions that take vacations, sick leave, and other kind of leave.
Okay. I'm concerned about the deficiency in training for our fire department. I think that it's possible due to cutbacks in our budget in the past, which, you know, is a council initiative. I think that we need to reinstate training so that we can get our firefighters and our entire fire department up to where it needs to be to keep the citizens of Peoria safe. I mean, they have the expectation that you guys are trained, that you guys have all the knowledge and all of the apparatus that you need, and it's our job to make sure that you do. And so I would like to add on that board over there that we add the training for paramedics and the lake rescue training that we also need. I mean, the longer we wait, the more lives are in jeopardy. This is not like, you know, we'll get more library books tomorrow. This is like life and death.
What is the cost per paramedic trained? She's got three at 123. So what would it cost to add one? And what would it cost to add two?
Mr. Mayor, most of the cost is, the paramedic training itself is anywhere from four to five to $6,000, depending on who we send the training through. Most of the call is a backfill while the paramedics are in training, anywhere from seven to 10 months.
Do you have your personnel to add one or two more to the training?
Mr. Mayor, we do.
I would agree with Ms. Carlott. Would you add paramedic training over there?
Just to clarify, Mayor, I heard you say one or two. Is that two additional paramedic training to the list? Is that what you're looking to add? Okay, thank you. And then you had mentioned, were you referring to the Lake Rescue Swimmer Program, which is already being recommended, or was there other training?
No, I think we need to, I think we need to go to the, you know, to the SCUBA piece of it.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was the same thing that you were looking at. So the second level that he described.
Is that a step-by-step process? In other words, you have to finish the swimmer program before you do the SCUBA program?
Mr. Mayor, that's true.
How long does the swimmer program take?
The first one, the swim program is the 80-hour program. The open swim, the open dive program is, depending on the program you go through, can be anywhere from four to six weeks. And then the last component of it is also six weeks long. So it's a quite lengthy program.
How much is the SCUBA program?
I don't have those figures in front of me, Mr. Mayor. We can get them. Again, I think that we need to kind of take one bite at a time, because it is a lot of time-consuming. And it'll take the people that are operators in the lake out of service, and we're yet training other people to be able to operate the boat. So we're taking one step at a time in order to do that. So my recommendation would be the other pieces of the program, the open water, that we would do it for next budget year and then look at the final piece, which is expensive, because the equipment, communication equipment becomes quite expensive, is that we do that the third, or at least look at doing it the third year.
Chief, I have a set of questions, but I want to start with, I need some clarification on the paramedic training. The $123,000 is for how many firefighters?
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, that's three.
Three, okay. And of the 123, how much goes specifically to training?
You're looking at...
It's approximately 17,000, 18,000, right around there.
That's for the training?
That's the actual cost of the training. The balance of that is to cover the overtime as the chief mentioned, for those who would have to fill while they're at the training.
Okay. Then that leads me to the next couple of questions, as I've had this question for the last couple of years. If you could go to page 439. And before I start, I'm going to ask Ms. Gregory, if you could tell me, what is the cost of hiring a firefighter?
The cost, generally the cost, I think we would...
For one calendar year?
For one FTE, for one calendar year, would be around $75,000 for hiring. That would include the salary and benefits.
And the question that I've had, I'm not going to, Chief Reese, can't wrap my mind around this issue of overtime, where it's ongoing every year. If the cost of hiring one firefighter is around $70,000, why wouldn't it make sense to have more firefighters onboard, instead of having an ongoing cost on overtime, having fresher bodies? I think that makes more sense from a business standpoint. And my question is, why haven't Mr. Manager or the chief looked into that further?
Looking at me or the chief?
Both of you.
Sure. Well, and as we've talked about in the past, Councilman Rivera, that's a balance that's always looked at in every fire department, everywhere. The balance of whether you carry more firefighters and reduce overtime, or whether you have higher overtime and fewer personnel. And the chief goes through that analysis on a regular basis and makes a recommendation each year as to what he believes is the appropriate balance of full-time firefighters versus the cost of overtime. So, Bobby, if you'd like to...
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Rivera, it's a balance. It's a decision. And throughout the valley, there's all kinds of models. There's Phoenix, who has a model of four-to-one, where they have, for every four firefighters, they have one rover. So for every one FTE, they actually budget 1.25. And then you can go all the way to Mesa, where they have a 10-to-1 ratio.
So they have less overtime? Under that model, there's less or more overtime?
Well, Phoenix has a huge overtime, but...
No, but I mean, under that model, is it more firefighters, less overtime, or is it more overtime?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Rivera, that's the theory, is that you have more firefighters, less overtime. And, but again, it's a balance. Mesa has a 10-to-1 ratio of firefighters to rovers. But it's a conscious decision in Mesa that they'd rather spend the overtime in lieu of FTE with all the benefits and all the other rollups in that position. So it's a conscious decision of where you want to be.
Okay. What are the pros and cons, pros and cons of having more overtime or more staff, and vice versa?
Mayor and Councilman Rivera, the benefits again is that with overtime, it's a flat cost, and you're not paying all the overhead, not all the benefits and rollups involved.
Okay. And, but in this case, let's say hiring a...
And if I may, I guess the downside is that when everything is well, and you don't need that overage, or you don't need those firefighters, then you're sitting what we call fat, is that you have firefighters, and you have then five, six firefighters on every apparatus, and you don't need it, essentially.
But shouldn't part of the decision or part of the reasons of arguing for more firefighters instead of more overtime, it shouldn't always be about money. If you have more overtime, don't you have firefighters who might be more overworked?
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, that's one way to look at it.
So what model does Peoria have? Something in the middle, or...
Yeah, we're in the middle. We're at about 6 to 7 to 1 ratio.
Okay. And are you ever considering going to a heavier side of having more firefighters and less overtime?
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, I think we would have to do a full analysis on that and the resources available, and then decide where the policymakers would like to go with that.
Well, I would encourage that. I would like for you to look into that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, to get that pain, I just want to say that the paramedic training is important to the city and to the firefighters, to keep our people safe. On these paramedic training, are you going to put one on the ladders?
Mayor, Councilman Leonie, at this time, no. We would have them in the rover pool so that when someone is sick or on vacation, is you have a pool that you can put in there. I mean, you could look, we could look at other models of putting them on ladders and then pulling them off if you need them. That's one another model. But if you put them on ladders, and I think that that's a model that eventually we need to grow to and have every piece of apparatus with paramedics, you have more flexibility in the system that way. But if you put them on the ladder currently with the model that will backfill for them, then you just exacerbate the problem at this point.
Don't you think we need them in the ladders?
I think eventually, Mayor, Councilman Leonie, I think that eventually we need to go to that model, yes.
Does all the other cities have them?
Pardon?
Does all the other cities have them?
No, they don't.
Does Sun City have it?
Few cities do.
Does Sun City have it?
Mayor, Councilman Leonie, Sun City is really hurting, and I'm not sure if they have medics on their ladder, because they're co-staffing their ladder with their engine. So they have shut down essentially one of their apparatus at the station and co-staff it. If they have a fire where they need the ladder, they take the ladder. If they have a fire in their first due area, they take the engine. So they've cut back on their staffing. So, no, they don't, I don't believe they have it on the ladder, unless they move it over from the engine.
I think it's important that we have one on the ladder, and I think it's important that we have the best equipment for our firefighters. And also, I think that maybe you should have a coffee with the chief of firefighter.
Coffee with the fire chief.
Mayor, Councilman Leonie, I'll open my doors to you anytime I have coffee.
Can I add just a little bit to this discussion? I think all of these questions point up the need for maybe a study session in the not-too-distant future, where we really talk about overall fire and EMS deployment over time in the city. Because we know that there's going to be growth occurring in the city. We've got another fire station planned for opening in about 19 or 20, right? So five, six years from now. We also have, as the council is aware, a strong desire to move into patient transport. I certainly do, and Chief Reese does, where, from our experience, you can improve the response from an EMS standpoint to having your own patient transport, your own ambulance service. And in that regime, you really up, I think, and in my experience, the number of paramedics you have across the department. And that changes some of the staffing, some of the cost, because if you're increasing the number of paramedics, which I think is overall a good thing, there's a premium pay associated with that generally. And that can be very beneficial to the firefighter paramedics as well, because you're offering opportunities for greater financial horizon as well. But these things change the overall deployment and service delivery that is in the fire EMS department. And there's some real benefits from some of these changes that I'm mentioning now and we've talked about in the past. So I would suggest that at some reasonable time in the near future, we get into kind of some of those strategic service delivery issues that I, you know, I think are important and can actually improve service delivery over time.
Yeah, I was going to kind of talk a little bit that way. Your EMS service, you recommended two more be trained, paramedic training. Are you having a problem? Are some of the service going out without a paramedic when it's needed, or are you meeting that need right now?
Mayor, Councilman Ames, no, we don't have an issue right now.
You don't have an issue, so...
Plenty to cover the front line.
So you have full coverage right now?
We have full coverage.
You haven't had a situation where you've gone out and there wasn't a paramedic, but there was a need for one, or...
That's correct.
Okay. So maybe it's better that, as our city manager said, that we look at this in a strategic kind of way, what the needs are. And you feel right now two would ensure even further that you're not going to run into a situation where you don't have a paramedic?
Mayor, Councilman Ames, vice Mayor Ames... Mayor, Councilman Ames, Vice Mayor Ames, yes, it would help with the rover pool.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to ask you the same question that I asked Chief Minter. So in 2014, you feel you are adequately staffed, and do you also feel that you will be adequately staffed in 2015?
Mayor, Councilman Matena, I do.
Could we go back to number two now?
Oh, yes, number two. Mayor, councilmembers, the second one is an apparatus bay exhaust system. One of our oldest stations here, Station 193, when it was built, had a very antiquated system, where you hooked up the exhaust system to the tailpipe of the truck to exhaust it, and was poor, and didn't last very many years. And we've been without an exhaust fan at that station. It's the only station that we don't have an exhaust system. So this would bring us up to OSHA requirements, and have a full ventilation, where you have a big fan blowing through there. Every time they open the door, the fan goes off, and you have an exhaust system, and on a timer, so a couple minutes later, after it's cleared out on a sensor, it goes off. Number three is a firefighter assistant grant. It's a one-time, it is a save-your-own-training, it is a train-the-trainer program, so we would send about a dozen people through the program. It includes props, because the International Association of Firefighters are very about being consistent, and the props being consistent. And this would train our firefighters how to get themselves out of a pinch in a fire.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
The next department is our municipal court, and we have 20.9 FTEs in our municipal court. And the total budget for that operation is $2,194,000. And Judge George Anegost will make the presentation for the court.
Mayor, good evening. Council, Vice Mayor...
Just like we rehearsed for hours today.
We'll educate you.
I'm learning. It's awfully good to see everyone, and I wish you good tidings. And we're happy to take this opportunity to present on behalf of the municipal court. I want to thank the members of the departments, and Mr. Swenson, the city manager, and Mr. Kemp. Every year that we're able to visit with you, give a sense of what the court operation is like, it's very accurate to describe that we're very fortunate to receive extremely helpful assistance and planning and guidance from the other departments. We could not do it without their functioning, and appreciate the fact that in getting ready for tonight's presentation, we got a lot of assistance from Budget, from Ms. Gregory's office, and from Jeff Tein, to make this fairly straightforward. The court situation is a fairly steady state situation. Our budget this year is in a maintenance continuation of last year. And as this schematic describes to you, it's a fairly simple and a fairly horizontal schematic. We have our court administration and support services, a group of four officers and security, that we engage in our fairly intense case management and protective order module, which is the primary function of the court employees and the court staff. And then we have a small portion of the court, so these boxes are not drawn to scale, if you will. It's a very small community outreach, which involves some critical functions, like performing weddings and doing some of our teaching. So we make sure weddings are wedged in there between restraining order hearings on the other side of all the human interactions that we have in American society and American culture. With the assistance of Budget, as I mentioned, and Finance, we are very committed to a key goal of council, a key part of its vision. I've often mentioned that we have a very impressive physical plant, the vision that you all showed as the leadership for the citizens of Peoria to create the municipal court building. It's an excellent building, and we take into that profile the enhancement of current services, the optimization of meeting our mandatory, state mandatory outcomes and performance standards, and very much, as Chief Minter had mentioned, with regard to the police department and the other departments, and with the help of Mr. Imig over at IT, to use as much optimization of technology, data management, and so forth, so that even with our existing personnel ratios, we can get these leverages that help us work on various projects. As we look forward to the 2015 fiscal year, we've asked for two budget additions, which would be two contract judicial assistance. These are one-time horizons. They are grant-funded, so that there would not be any direct impact on general fund or budget. These are funds that are created from the source of revenues that the court receives through the citation, the charging process. And we have already put in place the application forms to the Supreme Court's Administrative Office of the Courts. We hope to have a timely answer, so that we'll be able to have the July 1 deadline honored. Those are the notions that we have for today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
You indeed have a very stable, steady department. Revenues kind of stay the same every year, don't they? And the staffing stays the same, and so I applaud your good work.
It's thoughtful of you to say that, Councilman...
From a business point.
Vice Mayor Ames, I appreciate it, and we've articulated before that Peoria is a unique city, and you are all to be given a very accurate praise for understanding the function of the court, and very much understanding the independence and the separation of powers that are involved. But we're completely a reliant department, and we're very much aware of the need for community service, community policing, and we're at the function of how the officers are viewing what their function in the field is, and how they relate to the personnel and the public. So we're happy to do it, and appreciate the remarks.
Thank you. Other questions?
Ron, you better watch out to say, else I'll put a hook at you.
That's correct. Thank you very much. Thanks. Good to see everyone. I wish you a lot of health.
Thank you, Judge. And last, but certainly not least, for the departmental presentations, is our municipal court, excuse me, our municipal attorney, our city attorney. And the presentation will be made by Steve Kemp. There are 26 full-time equivalent employees in the city attorney's office, and the budget is $5,726,000.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here.
Turn on your mic. Your mic's on.
Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be here, considering yesterday, I got to spend my entire day at the Arizona State Attorney's Legislature in front of the Senate Appropriations I much prefer the city council. But with that, it's a pleasure to present the city attorney's budget. Moving on to the next page, the departmental overview. The city attorney's office has three divisions. The civil division, which is our general counsel and civil litigation and insurance program, the administration of the office, and the criminal division, which is our criminal prosecution and victim assistance program. And the civil litigation, we act as the city's general counsel, compliance officer, and basically provide what, in a corporate setting, would be defined as general counsel legal services. If you were to equate the city attorney to something in a corporate setting, it would be basically like a vice president and general counsel of a corporation. Within civil practice, we structure the lawyer's practice by specific subject areas, and we have lawyers who specialize within those subject areas. And moving on to the service discussion and the general counsel practice, one of the things that was referenced last year, and as you see referenced here, has been a continued growth in public records requests and public records cost. Our service outcomes really related to, obviously, the current goal is to enhance current services, and then our outcomes are timely response to city council and client agency requests, and to ensure the city's compliance with federal, state, and local laws. And as part of the city attorney appraisal, you'll recall that we did do a customer service appraisal, and that is something that we'll implement on a continual basis. Some significant cost drivers, the biggest one, obviously, is personnel. We do have a number of administrative costs. What the administrative hearing costs are, we provide administrative hearings in front of impartial hearing officers in a variety of contexts. Civil service hearings involving employee discipline, proclimate hearings involving appeals of bids, utility hearings involving appeals of utility bills. And also, land use hearings involving both hillsides, and hearings involving certain types of board of adjustment matters. All of those have impartial hearing officers. Those are what are within the administrative hearing cost. And we routinely end up, at the end of the year, because those are unpredictable, we track those, and, but those are a cost driver. Moving on to the civil litigation and insurance, our outcome there is, again, is to protect the city against risk. How we do that is by obtaining competitive insurance premiums, and we look at how we can reduce costs to the city for outside counsel, and as well as claims and cost. A big piece of that occurs because of the cooperation of your departments, as Chief Minter alluded to, the training that he is doing. That training directly relates to the numbers of law enforcement cases we see in insurance context. Law enforcement cases are extremely expensive cases to defend, and so that training carries over to what we do here. And the same is true with departments such as community services, when they look to repair and maintain their equipment, that flows over to fewer property claims on the insurance side. We, as I mentioned in your earlier budget hearing, we are seeing a hurting of the insurance market. Fortunately, the city has a very, very good claims record, and we don't expect to be surprised by significant premium increases. This city, with the cooperation of your city manager and his departments, has done very, very well as an entity. When we went out for bids a year ago for insurance, not only did we have four bids for broker consultants, which is very unusual, I can tell you, usually, you might get one or two bids to represent a government, we had, in various areas, six to eight companies bid for the city's business. That speaks, again, highly of the city as a risk. The cost drivers is, again, you see truly the, from a contractual side, the litigation expenses, the expenses on property claims, and primarily, the insurance premium. Moving on to the criminal division, the council role is obviously enhancing current services and community building. When we think of the criminal justice system, the police is the first piece of the system, they enforce the law. The court is the last piece of the system, they adjudicate the law, and we're in the middle of that system. We are the folks who prosecute what the police bring to us, and deliver that to the court. Our service outcomes really are based upon efficient prosecution disposition of cases. I can tell you, we do not have very many criminal appeals. Fortunately, almost all the criminal appeal work that we have in Peoria, many times, is because we've chosen to appeal a judge's ruling that we thought warranted appeal. We don't have cases, as you would find in other cities, where prosecutors have made errors, and as a result, are appeals. We do an excellent job in protecting victims' rights. We have a very aggressive victim assistance program with our victim assistance coordinator, John Goodman, and we work very, very hard to protect the rights of crime victims. And then finally, we work in the community to reduce domestic violence through community awareness, through networking with other agencies within the community on that. Performance measures, one of the programs, again, that you have seen a lot in the media recently, is can we find ways to minimize incarceration? One of the ways that we do that is, obviously, we've had the home detention program, and I am pleased to report, in the first year in that program, we have had extraordinary success, both in the numbers, and we've had a total of five people who failed out of the program of roughly 165 people. So that's about a 3% failure rate. And I can tell you, a criminal justice program, a 3% failure rate is extraordinary. The deferred prosecution program is another program. This is a diversion program, where individuals sign a contract, they complete that contract, and their case is dismissed. We are very, very rigorous. You sign the contract, you're going to comply with the contract, and if you don't, then we will prosecute you. Because the goal here is, is to enforce and provide consequences for behavior. If you move on to the next slide, which is budget changes, the budget additions really are pertaining to economic development projects. In one case, the Peoria Sports Complex project, that is, project is well on its way to being wound up. The DLGC Estates at Lakeside, this is a case that we settled. The Estates at Lakeside is a pulse of land near Lake Pleasant, that as part of the settlement, the city put money in escrow to acquire a private water and sewer company, and the money is still in escrow because of the work that we did. But the entity is in bankruptcy, and what we want to do is, is deal with the bank that's foreclosed on the property, and get what the city intended, and we do think we're going to need some outside counsel for that matter. The other potential adjustments, the Vistancia Commercial Corp. This is an extraordinarily large project. It isn't that we don't have the talent within the office to deal with it, it's simply that we don't have the resources to deal with a project of this extent. It doesn't make, lawyers are expensive to hire. It would make more expense to go outside and use contract services for this. We believe we can monitor these services, how we do that. We scrutinize lawyer bills. We look for things, such as law firms, that perhaps include too much research. I can tell you, I know what I think it should take to research a matter, and if I have more than one set of law firms, really, I think you're going to need to come back and adjust your bill, because that's not going to be acceptable. We also look at fees, we also look at when an associate can do the work, I want an associate doing the work. I don't want to be paying partners to do work that associates can do. When a partner needs to do the work, then I'm fine with the city paying a partner. But we scrutinize and look at a number of things very, very closely, to make sure the city gets the maximum bang for its buck. And with all of that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm pleased to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Rivera?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Kemp. How is the city attorney's office doing in regards to protecting the cities from lawsuits from outside entities, including internal entities, too?
Councilmember Rivera, members of the council, I think we're doing very, very well. From a lawyer's standpoint, I can tell you, the biggest risk right now that I see for governmental entities is in the employment area. Governmental entities are not doing well as defendants in employment-related lawsuits. We work extremely closely with your human resources department. Steve Berg, who is our designated human resources lawyer, meets literally every other week. We go over cases, matters that they're doing, and providing legal advice to make sure we avoid as many opportunities, that we don't have mistakes that create problems. So the answer is, yeah... So the answer is, yeah, I think we are doing a very good job there.
But why are governments not doing well in that area, in the employment area?
Why are cities generally? I think a big piece of it, if you look at overall across the, both the valley, I subscribe to the Trial Reporter, which is basically a biography of every trial held in both the federal and state courts here in Arizona. A big piece of it is, is that there's a lot of sympathy for employees. It's been a very hard economy, and people have suffered a great deal, and juries, I think, reflect that. And so that hard economy has had the impact of making those cases more attractive than they may have been in past times.
So in regards to a lawsuit, there's two entities that are involved on whether mistakes are being made, and that is the city attorney's office and human resources? Can you clarify?
Well, in an employment lawsuit, we not just work with human resources, we work with the affected department. We ourselves, obviously, handle the litigation. We, and so it's very much a collegial process.
But what is the city attorney's office doing so we're not setting ourselves up for failure?
We work very closely with your HR department on training. We talk with them on a number of areas that we recommend training. We work with the intergovernmental affairs department. They do a training program for aspiring supervisors. We present at that program to provide training. We also do a series of trainings ourselves on various issues. And when we see problems in departments, I can tell you, we have sat down with a number of departments where they've had litigation, and we've discussed their litigation. And quite candidly, we've discussed things that perhaps the city attorney would have preferred that they'd done differently. And so we have a continual process of follow-up.
And is there ever training for, you know, anti-discrimination?
Yes, but the city both provides training within its humanities.
I meant from the city attorney's perspective.
The city attorney's office, we review with HR the training that's provided through HR, and we make suggestions, and we get involved while HR provides that training, it has been reviewed by us, and we've incorporated, they have always incorporated our input into that training.
So as a city attorney, you're not concerned about discrimination?
I am, I am concerned that the city comply always with federal and state law. I think our training is adequate in terms of meeting the requirements of federal and state law. Am I concerned? You bet. I am always concerned that we follow both state and federal and local law.
Mr. Kemp, more specifically, I know you're concerned from that angle. My specific question, are you concerned about discrimination in Peoria as an organization?
As an organization, I think we handle discrimination complaints very well. I think we react well, we follow up well, and when we, I can tell you, I think our process today is far better than our process was five years ago. I think our process today is incredibly better than it was 10 years ago. And we work very hard, both with the city manager's staff, his departments, in doing that. And so the answer is, yes, I think we are following up on those complaints in a legally appropriate way.
Mr. Kemp, I'm very disappointed in your response.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, I've been looking over some of the budgets in terms of growth over time. You've been handling yours pretty well. You got the same staff you had in 11 and 12, and it went up, I think, for a number of years there because of the insurance premium, more than anything else. And now you've got these extra burdens in terms of some of our economic development requirements, so. Other than that, you've been pretty steady, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Other questions or comments?
Excuse me, Mayor, I, just given the last kind of questioning from Councilman Rivera, I'm compelled to ask Mr. Rivera, is there something that you should be sharing with me?
No, it was a simple question to the city attorney, and I was trying to get a straight answer. I understand, as far as trying to protect the city, my direct question was, are you concerned about discrimination in the city of Peoria? Not about whether you're doing good training, or what we're trying to prevent. That's not my question. My question is, are you concerned about discrimination in Peoria? Not whether we're doing good training or not.
Councilmember Rivera, members of the council, perhaps I understood that question. The answer is, yes, I am always concerned about discrimination. So the answer is, yes, I'm concerned that, I'm always concerned about that. I'm concerned because it is an area that creates legal exposure. So the answer is, yes, I'm concerned.
But I'm not talking, Mr. Kemp, about discrimination in general that you're concerned. As a city, are you concerned about the city discriminating? Is something going on? That's what I'm asking. I'm not asking whether, in theory, you're against discrimination or concerned about discrimination. Kath, do you want to say something?
Well, I guess I need to, I need to say something here. I mean, this, we have, within the management of the city, a very clear no-tolerance policy and practice for discrimination at all, ever, anyplace. And each director is held accountable for that not happening in their department. The human resources department is very vigilant. We do regular training. It's clear throughout the administration of the city that we do not tolerate any discrimination, Mr. Rivera, of any kind. In any matter where there might be an assertion, an accusation, a statement, even an anonymous statement, as to whether there might be discrimination, we follow a thorough investigation that takes us, wherever it leads, we follow it. And we've developed a very close working relationship between the HR department and the city attorney's office, not just on discrimination matters, but any type of employee investigation that might occur. And so I just, I need to say that. I'm not sure what the genesis of your question is, but I needed to make sure that I was offering my perspective on that.
Thank you.
Got a budget question?
I was asking a question.
About the budget?
Yes, I was.
How so?
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
The last presentation will be Katie Gregory on the non-departmental budget.
I'm back again. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to do the very brief presentation on the non-departmental budget, and as the name implies, this is not part of a department.
You're not in a department? You're in every department.
Apparently, this is the citywide department. This really is a department where there are two funding sources that relate to this department. We have some general fund as well as some half-cent, this is where the half-cent sales tax fund is housed. And on the general fund side, really, the components that are included in there are, your council district funds are where, this is where that funding is budgeted, as well as the public defenders for the court, and a number of other citywide items that don't necessarily belong in a specific department, such as membership dues, some of the investment fees, excuse me, investment fees, and tax payments, things like that, that are, that are not specific to a department. It also includes, as I mentioned, the half-cent sales tax fund, which we've talked with council about in previous presentations, about what that covers, and again, those items are listed up here. As far as the fiscal year 15 budget, some of the changes that you'll see in the non-departmental budget have already been discussed from other presentations. The first one is, obviously, this is where, the non-departmental general fund is where the Center for Performing Arts request is going to be housed. And then also, as Scott mentioned yesterday during his discussion, on the BioInspire project that we're requesting in the half-cent sales tax fund, $167,000 one time, to help support on the BioInspire side to pay for the lease associated with the BioInspire project.
And that lease, we hadn't been paying until now, is that correct?
We had been paying this, so this is a, we had been paying this out of the original council allocation of $1.6 million for BioInspire per year. So this is in addition, too. So they have come forward and put forward a budget with a request. So this is to take that out of that 1.6 and allow BioInspire to fully utilize the 1.6 that we pay for out of the Economic Development Opportunity Fund, and then the city, the city has always paid this, this is a city cost, but it has been part of that project originally, this is, this is an additional amount.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
All right.
Can I add something to that white paper up there?
Yes, we will get that up there on the list for you, that you would like to add two park rangers, and we will figure out what that amount is.
You don't know how much?
I would estimate it somewhere in the range of $135,000, yeah, somewhere around there.
For one?
For two.
How much for one? About 75?
About 60, 65, 70, about 70.
I'll plop a chunk in that, Joe.
I'm sorry. There would also be, there would all, I mean, that's inclusive of salary benefits, and then there would also be, obviously, some one-time associated with that, with vehicles and things like that. So we'll have to go back and figure out what all of that would be, to give you an accurate idea of what that would be.
Now, are we adding now? Did you have something with that?
Yeah. We had the presentation on the kind of resurfacing of 75th Avenue from Thunderbird to Peoria.
In the Capitol discussion, or in?
Yeah, I think that was in the Capitol, yeah.
Yes, yes.
And I'm interested in it going the other way from Thunderbird to Sweetwater. You can do that additionally, or you can take, as you get closer to Peoria, I don't think it's needed, it's well down there, at least I want that looked at, and where the true need is in terms of the excessive wear and tear that occurred, particularly north of Thunderbird, when we did the intersection there, because the utilities were really severe digging in that area.
Okay, so you'd like, Andy, to take a look at that, at maybe allocating some of that, or looking at other areas that we can extend those improvements, and maybe not do as much?
Well, I was specifically looking from Thunderbird up to Sweetwater is where wear and tear, maybe I went a block past Sweetwater.
Okay, that's good.
Do you have a request? So I assume we'll come back tomorrow and do reconciliation?
If that is the council's, we will, we will need on some of these some time to go back and figure out the costs, and so that you can have that discussion about those items.
High figures, though.
Yes.
So we're adjourned until tomorrow?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.